Okay, everyone, we are now live. You can begin at any time.
Okay, thank you. Good morning again, council and everybody else that's joining the meeting. I'd ask Mr. Tippel to rise and record in camera, please.
Yes, thank you. There are two matters to report, providing from the in-camera section of this morning. Council met for approximately seven, eight minutes in camera. It received, one, an update on labor relations, collective agreement negotiations between the county and Uniform 65 that represents employees at our Sarnia Library and the J-Neg Gallery. And then, secondly, the council provided staff with instructions in relation to a proposed funding agreement between the county and the province on Ontario, where it proposed that multi-unit affordable housing development in the city of Sarnia. Further specifics of that will be released between now and council next. That might be me. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Tippel. Next on the agenda is Dr. Renaday. There's Dr. Renaday. Good morning, Dr. Renaday. You can... An interesting note, I was looking back, it was a year ago this Friday that Dr. Renaday gave an update to county council that there was three cases in Ontario. So, a lot's happened in a year. I'll give the floor to you, Dr. Renaday, please.
Thank you.
There it comes.
Okay, let's try that again.
That's pretty good.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. I have probably a lengthy update today. There's a lot of stuff to cover, and I'll try to cover it in a structured way. I'm also going to share my screen with you, as I've done in the past, to show you some graphs to give you a sense of the information that I'm trying to convey to you. But primarily, let's start with the local situation. So, yesterday's report said that we had three cases. So, you know, the warden said a year ago, I said there were three cases in Ontario. Yesterday, there were three cases here, and that's a substantial reduction from, you know, where we had been. And over the weekend, we were getting fewer and fewer cases, and so now we're into sort of handfuls of cases. So, yesterday's report had us at three cases over the prior 24 hours, which brings our total during this pandemic to 1,845 cases. There were 21 recoveries, which brings our total number of recoveries up to 1,739. And as of yesterday, we had five institutional outbreaks and two workplace outbreaks. I think the important thing to remember is, as you get cases that are fewer and fewer, your recoveries start to go up and up, right? And they balance out. So, you start to see more and more recoveries on the other end, because that takes more time. And so, that's a trend that we're seeing across the province. So, if I move into sort of the general situation now, the province is seeing declining case counts daily. That's a good sign with respect to disease transmission. It is likely due to the impact of restrictions and the inability of people to gather in different places, right? So, we can see that that is having an impact. Of course, we know that there are, that those kinds of restrictions have impacts of their own. And so, obviously, that tension now is reemerging about, to what extent do you let people do things? To what extent do you need to control disease, right? That's the constant, ongoing tension at the province in terms of what we should be allowing to open and whatnot. Okay, with daily case counts across Ontario declining, I think you should expect to see either today or tomorrow, certainly this weekend, announcement about schools. I cannot tell you what that would be. I'm not sure. It'll be a decision based on, you know, what the cabinet decides. But looking at the numbers and looking at the fact that some places have already opened up their schools, I should expect that you would see an announcement that would be related to school reopenings and that it would happen sooner rather than later. The other piece that you should be aware of is that, you know, there's lots of discussion about variants, right? Their variant strains of COVID-19, they're the same virus, but they look a little bit different. They have little genetic differences among them. And some of those differences can make them, can make that particular strain a little bit more transmissible. There's an open conversation about whether or not some of those strains are more severe, but right now, we don't think so. There's an open conversation about whether or not the strains are equally amenable to being protected against by the vaccine, and right now, we think that most of them are. So, we have, there's some conditions under which you can test for this variant. If you have a big super-spreader event, if you have challenging outbreaks that you're trying to manage. So, there are some conditions that the lab sets around when they'll test for the variant. Where those conditions have been met, we have locally sent or requested that samples be tested for the variant and the samples that are... Was that just me, or was that everyone?
How were you?
I think it was the county system, Dr. Renaday, so, yeah. Sorry about that. Well, not me that did it, but... Whenever you're ready, doctor.
Okay, sure. So, I'll keep going if you can hear me. Just give me a thumbs up or something that you can... Okay, great. So, remember, there's an ongoing conversation about whether or not we would be, have different guidelines for contact tracing with respect to the variants, but right now, we're still trying to sort through some of that. So, for now, it's business as usual, but not much in the way of different elements to try to prevent those variants once, you know, in the general community. So, everything we're doing, we keep doing, but we're going to keep an additional eye out for those variants and see if they, if they are here, and more broadly, to see if they're meaningful, if the fact that it's a variant is in any way meaningful with respect to disease transmission or disease severity. Okay, there were some questions related to sort of cases and deaths. And, and so, I'm going to show you some graphs, and then I'll come back to me, okay? So, I'm going to try to share my screen and see if that works. You should be seeing my screen and not me. Is that right? Okay, good. Okay, so, first of all, I think I just want you to be aware of the age distribution of cases of COVID in Canada, right? This is from the Public Health Agency of Canada site. And so, you can see that COVID affects a wide variety of age ranges, right? So, all age ranges are affected, and it's important to note that, right, everyone is susceptible to infection potentially, and their age is no barrier to that. But what's important to remember, too, is this graph here, which is the age and sex distribution of deaths in Canada, right? So, you can see that this graph looks a lot different from the graph that I just shown you, showed you, where everybody is susceptible, but the people who are, who are susceptible to the most severe outcomes such as death, you know, as you get older, that risk increases, right? So, this is the 80-plus bar, this is the 70 to 79 bar, this is the 60 to 69 bar. And you can see dramatic reductions in risk of death as you go down the age groups, right? And so, when we look at that in Ontario, that is, sorry, that's not the one, that's the one. It's the same picture in Ontario, and you would expect it to be the same picture just about everywhere, that when you look at the rate of death among these different age categories, you see a substantial rise, right? As you get older, once you pass sort of this mark here, it starts to rise substantially and almost exponentially. So, you can see, and when we'll talk about vaccines, we'll talk about this, right? That there's, there's a group of people who say that there's significant evidence that by starting at this age range and moving down in terms of your vaccination program, you can have a significant impact on mortality, right? Okay. After I reread the question, I realized that it was possible that the question asking about causes of death was not entirely just about COVID, and maybe it was about all of the other different causes of death, et cetera. So, I was able to find from the leading causes of death in Canada from 2019, which is a Stats Canada report that came out in late 2020. It was November 2020. So, if we want to look at the data from 2020, it's probably going to be later in the year of 2021, when Statistics Canada would finalize that data, right? But if you look at the overall leading causes of death in Canada for 2019, I expect it would be fairly similar at the level of the province. So, it's probably better to go with, with the Canadian numbers. 28.2% of all deaths in Canada from 2019 were due to cancer, and 18.5 were due to heart disease. So, cancer and heart disease are still the primary killers of Canadians through 2019, as well as probably going back several years. When you look at some lower ones, you have influenza and pneumonia, which was 2.4. And it's, I don't know how this data will be reported in, in 2020 with respect to COVID, whether, whether or not COVID will be drawn out separately or categorized as other infectious diseases. But look at all other causes of death here. That's actually 30%, right? So, even though the numbers start going down and down and down, when you lump up all the other categories here, it's still 30% of deaths, right? So, there's a whole set of other groupings, but, but do things about the vaccine, right? So, ongoing conversations about whether or not we're going to get different kinds of vaccines approved. Of course, if they come, if they become approved, we'll let you know, and we'll talk about how we can integrate some of those additional vaccines into the vaccine program. Important for you all to know that, you know, all of the doses that we received in the first shipment of vaccine have now been distributed or delivered to folks in long-term care and retirement homes, the residents. We're still expecting another, another shipment later this week, and then as soon as we get it, then we'll move forward on delivering those doses as well. Our dashboard is going to be updated to talk a little bit about the vaccines that we've administered, and so that'll be a weekly update on Wednesdays, and so today is the first day of that. You'll see that it's going to say that we administered 499 doses, and some of you may be aware that we received an expected amount of 500 doses. And so, if there are questions about where, what happened to that one dose, the answer to that question is really that when you have a new vaccine and new manufacturing processes, right? There are times where, just as we've known instances where you can get more doses out of a vial than you expect, there are also times when you get less doses out of a vial than you expect. And so, there was one vial that we think that we got one less dose out of, and so you won't see 500 administered, you'll see 499 administered. Recognize, over time, you're going to see lots of discrepancies between the number of vaccines that we get and the number of vaccines that we deliver, because it could be up if we get a bit more out of a dose, a vial, or lower if we get a bit less out of a vial. And also, there are pieces around wastage that we will try to minimize, but that, of course, happens every once in a while. Okay, so, we're waiting for more vaccines. Those will hopefully come later this week, and then we'll be able to move on delivering those to the long-term care homes and retirement homes that we weren't able to go to, as well as the elder care institutions on First Nations communities. We are actively planning for scale-up, but of course, remember, you might remember that I've said this about the vaccines, that as they start to come in, right, it's crawl, walk, run. Like, we don't expect that we're going to get a whole bunch all at a time, and that has also borne out with the Moderna vaccine, too, right? We thought, oh, yeah, no problem with the Moderna supply chain, and now, of course, there are problems with the Moderna supply chain. So, I think that's the thing with, that we need to expect more of and just be cognizant of that as we move forward. There are active discussions, I'm sorry, this is really long. There's just so much for me to tell you. There are active discussions at the level of the province around what the next priority group will be after long-term care homes and retirement home residents and staff and the essential caregivers, right? And what the eligibility criteria will be and how to manage that. So, active discussions there. I think what you're going to see moving forward is a tension between, like, if you have lots and lots of vaccine, none of these things are a problem. You can just, you know, expand the eligibility criteria and vaccinate as many people as you can. Where you have a small amount of vaccines, and now you're looking at the next priority group, the biggest tension is going to be between people who feel that they should have vaccine because they are at higher risk of exposure, and people who feel that they should have vaccine because although they might be able to control their exposure, if they are exposed, they are at higher risk of severe outcomes. Okay, so that's going to be the biggest tension now, is sort of, do we, do we focus more on places where we would have a higher risk of exposure to reduce exposure in the setting? Or do we focus on people who turn it back to your ward?
Really not you, Dr. Renaday. There seems to be a problem in the system. So, Counselor White, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Ward Marriott. Dr. Renaday, is there any concern with the ongoing supply interruptions that we are seeing that we may have residents who are scheduled for a second dose and might not get it on time? And if so, what would that do for the efficacy of the vaccination?
Yeah, good question, counselor. So, there is a, though, that maybe if there's any relationship to bandwidth or anything like that, that, that might, that might help. So, I'm going to do that, but I'm still, still here to answer your questions. So, we're informing the people who were immunizing in these early rounds that their second dose may be delayed for reasons that we can't control, and also that we don't think that that delay will have a major impact on the efficacy of the vaccine, given what we know about vaccines. But I think it's something that we, we let everyone know about, and we should expect it. But over time, I think you'll even see a lengthening of the second dose interval anyway, especially if we get more studies that show that it's equally or more effective if you delay.
I'll start now. Oh, my God.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Can Dr. Renaday tell us how many homes is left in Sarnia to do and who's next in line?
Sure, counselor. So, the, I think we've done about half of the homes, and the other half are still scheduled when we get the next doses. So, I can't tell you specifically who's next in line, because it varies based on when we would start. But we do have the remainder all on schedule, and we typically work with the homes based on when we get the vaccine to plan out the next schedule. So, we've got it all ready to go, and we've got all of the plans in place. But actually, which home we do next will be really dependent upon what day we get the vaccine.
Counselor Bird.
Thank you, Ward Marriott. Dr. Renaday, thanks for your presentation. Just a quick question. On one of your graphs, where you were showing the percentages for all different causes of mortality, at the bottom where it said all, all other causes, like 83%, I can't remember the exact, I think it was in the ages, anyway. I'm not expecting you to know what all those other causes are, but have you any idea how many causes are included in that, any other, all other causes category?
Sure, yeah, counselor. It was 83,000 deaths, which amount to about 30% of the overall causes of death. I won't show you the screen, because I just don't want to crash again. But, but it's, it's probably, I would say, hundreds, because these are, they're specific international codes that are used to categorize mortality, and there are hundreds of them. So, with all other causes, it's actually a long, long list.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr.
So, go ahead, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Dr. Rande, I just received your press release on the immunization clinics. And I don't note anyone in the urban area of Sarnia, where there's 75,000 people. There's one in Point Edward, there's one in Lake Forest, and one in Wyoming. And I know the city offered Clearwater Arena and a number of other facilities, yet not one of them is going to be a clinic. And what I'm going to request of you, because I, is that you meet with the city primary control group in the next 24 hours to discuss this further.
So, counselor, I'm happy to meet with the EOC. We just met yesterday with the city's EOC. So, if there's a meeting that we need to schedule, I'm happy to do that. I think it's important to remember that we've worked to scout out different locations for a, for a number of clinics, and I'm happy to talk more about that perhaps at another, at another meeting of this group.
Well, I think it's really important. I mean, it's locations we offered you had all the ingredients that were requested: transportation, lots of parking, all those things. And it's a bit of a mystery at this point to understand the rationale not to have at least one major clinic in the city of Sarnia. So, I will leave it to your staff to set something up with the primary control group. We're ready to meet whenever you want to.
Sure, absolutely.
Counselor Bushy, you had a question?
I, I think the doctor mentioned this, but I like it to be repeated. Does he, next shipment, do you guess how many vials we're going to have in the vaccine? Is it only 500?
So, I believe that we're getting a little bit more than 500. It's hard to say specifically, because sometimes they give us projections, but then at the last minute, they might reallocate towards a different need. So, I think the point here is that they know, you know, we've told them, and they know how many initial doses we need to cover long-term care home and, and high-risk retirement home and elder care residence, and that's, that's the focus. So, that's what they're planning around. So, I think that the next amount of doses we're getting is at least 500, but I'm hoping it'll be a little bit more. It's hard to say until we actually get the shipment.
Any, any other questions? If I can't see your hand, and if you're not on the screen, feel free to speak up as well. Well, it looks like maybe that is the end of the questions, so, I guess, thank you, Dr. Renaday, for the update, and we will let you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Deputy Warden, hand. Do you have a question?
There was a comment made, might have been while you were frozen out, about whether we should switch it over to meet for the delegations in case you freeze out again. So, I don't know what your thought is on that process. Or is it stabilized, or?
It seems to have stabilized, but if you, definitely, if you can be ready to... That would be great, just in case.
Thanks, Kevin.
I'm assuming that it's affecting not only Wyoming but Sarnia, because was Dr. Renaday on the whole time, or did he disappear too?
He disappeared, but he mentioned that he was on the county system.
Yeah, so that's, it has to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we can move on with the rest of the agenda. If we could have a motion to, to allow the delegations, please. Moved by Counselor Rumbaut, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. All in favor? It's carried. First, first delegation is Enbridge Gas. I believe we have Steven Jellic, Daryl Arnold, and Brian Lenny. So, I'll turn it over to you gentlemen, and you can make your presentation, please.
Great. I'll just wait till the presentation comes up, but I'll take the opportunity to say good morning and thank you, everyone, for allowing Enbridge to come before you this morning and give you a bit of an update. Maybe I'll apologize in advance to Mayor Arnold and Mayor Miller, who would have seen most of this presentation on Monday, but they'll just be a little bit further along than the rest of the folks. Okay, here we go. So, again, thank you this morning for the opportunity to present. Again, my name is Steven Jellic. I'm the Director of Southwest Operations at Enbridge, and I'm joined here today with Daryl Arnold, who's the Manager of Operations, and Brian Lenny, who's our Senior Advisor of Municipal Affairs. And really, it's twofold this morning. What we're hoping to do is to cover off the number of significant projects that are either in the planning stage or, quite frankly, underway in Lampton County. And perhaps just, and perhaps even more importantly, what we're doing on the GHG front to advance a lower carbon footprint from, on an Enbridge perspective, and I think you'll find that interesting. We just advanced to the next slide, please. Great. So, really, some fast facts, and perhaps many of you are familiar with this, but I'll say, again, most of us on this virtual meeting would, would remember us as Union Gas, but of course, on January 1st, 2019, there was an amalgamation of Union Gas, Enbridge Gas Distribution. We are proud to be the largest utility in North America by volume at Sendo, and of course, the third largest when you think of customer base and located in Ontario. Many of you might not know that we, we represent 40% of the, of Ontario's energy needs, and we heat three-quarters of Ontario homes. And beyond that, I think, you know, we'll talk a little bit about the core business, but part of, part of what Enbridge is about is be a good community partner. And I will share with you that in 2017, that we invested just over $6.5 million in strengthening initiatives across Ontario, and essentially, they're aligned in... I'm going to back the noise. Three pillars: health and safety, environment, and community. So, we're quite proud of that. It's not just the core business, but it's being a good community partner. Maybe if we can advance to the next slide, please. So, I think, you know, the tagline here is safety and reliability is really job number one. And to that effect, we've had and continue to invest heavily in our integrity programs for the safety of all residents, businesses, and industries. And we're just shy of $3 billion over, over eight years. And you need to, and when you think of that number, that, that number doesn't include our expansion and growth program and our day-to-day operations. That's strictly ensuring the integrity of our system continues to be safe and reliable. The next slide, please. So, closer to home in Lampton County. We probably served Lampton County for over 100 years, providing residents with, I think, reliable and, and quite frankly, affordable... One thing I would draw your attention to is, you know, property tax. And again, just south of $10 million on an annual basis. And, you know, this, we are the only utility to pay property tax on our assets, and our assets we consider as passive, because really, we don't receive snow clearing, garbage pickup, et cetera, for this. And I recognize it doesn't always go to just the community. There's an offset that goes elsewhere. But in essence, we are the only utility that pays property tax on our assets, and they are passive. The other thing I would draw your attention to is, last year in Lampton County, we supported local organizations in response to COVID-19. That would have included the YMCA, Sarnia-Lampton, Charlotte Eleanor, Englehart Hospital Foundation, Sacred Heart Food Bank, St. Joseph's Hospice, Community Concerns for the Medically Fragile, and the Sombra and More Optimist Clubs. So, again, quite proud of that funding, and that was incremental monies that we found during the COVID. So, again, a focus on community. The next slide, please. So, access to natural gas. You know, we, like you, are waiting on Phase II Natural, the Natural Gas Expansion Program announcement from the provincial government, and quite frankly, we expect the announcement to be made this year. Two of the, or one key piece that's, that makes this possible, of course, is the surcharge. And there's been a couple names: the System Expansion Surcharge, temporary connection surcharge. But really, we're, we're calling it Expansion Surcharge. So, for the Community Expansion Program, that really is government, I'll say, government control. We supplied, in cooperation with many municipalities, a submission of which went to the Ontario Energy Board. Ontario Energy Board then made a proposal recommendation to the provincial government. And so, the provincial government will let us know what projects will go for it, so we're awaiting that. The other thing that we have a little bit more control over is what we're calling our Regional Expansion Program. And that is, I'll say, for primarily, a rough definition, 50, 50 services or less. And that, again, enables us to use the surcharge to defer the upfront costs that a lot of, I'll say, you know, perhaps grain farmers, grain farmers are looking to, basically, you know, bring natural gas to their farm, but find that the upfront cost is too much. So, with this surcharge, and we can use this surcharge over 40 years, it sometimes provides an opportunity that otherwise, you know, prevents somebody if they didn't have the, to actually hook up to natural gas. So, we're, I'll say, we're busy looking at all the projects that, throughout Ontario, that we would have received before, and customers said, geez, the aid to construct upfront is, is too heavy. We can't do that. So, we're, again, currently analyzing that and seeing how this program might help hook more customers up. So, those two programs are over and above. So, the Community Expansion, the Regional Expansion, that's over and above what I would call our organic growth, our infill growth, which accounts for about 40,000 to 50,000 attachments each year across Ontario. Next slide, please. So, you know, recent announcement, we're, I'll say, we're very proud of our stewardship, stewardship position on the energy front. I think in November, Enbridge announced the plan to get to net zero by 2050. And as an interim goal, 35% reduction... to net zero by 2050. And as an interim goal, 35% reduction in GHG emissions intensity by 2030. And so what does this announcement mean for Enbridge Gas, which operates in Ontario? The answer, quite frankly, is multiple low and zero carbon ongoing initiatives for future plans. And I can see we're already at the next slide, so people are moving me along and that's fine. Our low carbon future is really four pillars. Less gas. So less gas means remain, reducing emissions by helping customers use less gas. And that's energy efficiency programs, promoting natural gas pumps. The next pillar would be more gas. And so that's replacing oil, propane with cleaner burning natural gas for home and water heating. And it's also about switching heavy duty transportation from diesel to compressed natural gas, or commonly referred to as CNG. Our third pillar is green gas. So reducing emissions by using carbon neutral gas. That's blending hydrogen and renewable natural gas or RNG from organic waste in our distribution system. And lastly, no gas, geothermal, hydrogen and renewable energy. So whether you're looking to cut costs, reduce emissions, purchasing new heat equipment or create a more comfortable environment, I think what I'd like to get across here is that Enbridge Gas offers a variety of programs, incentives and services to really help you achieve your objectives, whether that, whether as a municipality and/or private business. So the next slide, you know, and we call it really the sustainable and prudent approach to getting there. And so again, looking at really the four pillars that we've identified here, conservation, conservation, we, we are recognized as a leader in energy efficiency and conservation. And by the way, I'll say this is not something new. We've been doing this for over 20 years. And currently we deliver $2 per month of cost-effective residential energy conservation program. The programs designed and delivered by Enbridge Gas have saved residential, commercial and industrial customers about 28 billion cubic meters of natural gas and reduced CO2 emissions by 52 million tons. So that's considerable. And I'll say that's something that we took on before. I'll say that there was a great focus on environment. 20, 25 years ago, you certainly didn't hear about the level of pressure there is today to help transition the energy industry going forward. We also have cleaner technologies for heat. You know, Enbridge continues to develop and execute green energy technologies that we believe will, not believe, we know will deliver cleaner air, reduce emissions and lower costs. And the examples I would cite are combined heat and power and geothermal. It cuts your energy costs and it improves sustainability and resiliency in the, in the sector. Cleaner technologies for transport. So I've talked about this a little bit earlier, but the transportation sector is the single largest emitter of carbon in Ontario, 35%. And the bulk of the emissions are from heavy duty vehicles and buses that run on diesel. So heavy duty vehicles can't practically be electrified, as many of you know, and but they can be converted to lower carbon compressed natural gas. And compressed natural gas is better for the environment and offers lower costs. You know, converting fleets to CNG would reduce tailpipe emissions by 95%, overall greenhouse gas emissions by 20 and save 40% on fuel. So it's a win-win-win on many fronts. And they are 90% quieter than diesel engines, which is important to many of us. So I can tell you that many cities have already made the switch. And Ontario has hundreds of refuse trucks running on CNG today. And cities like Hamilton, Kamloops and Calgary use CNG for transit vehicles. Finally, green fuels, renewable natural gas and hydrogen. From an RNG, renewable natural gas front, it's carbon neutral. It's a renewable fuel source that is created by capturing the methane emissions from anaerobic digesters, landfills and wastewater treatment plants. It's clean and then we inject it back into Enbridge Gas natural gas network and we use it for residential and commercial energy needs as well as transportation fuel. And you know, this is certainly one that we invite both private and, and government to reach out to us because we are in the process of working with both in, in helping to bring this to fruition. Many of you might be aware of one of the larger RNG operations and that's Storm Fisher. That's just off the 401, south of the 401, near Wellington in London. And then hydrogen power to gas. So this is an emerging fuel and enabler in all markets. You see more, you see more of it in Europe, but it is certainly coming to North America. You know, the power to gas energy storage is, is an efficient use of excess power. And I can tell you that Enbridge Gas recently commissioned North America's first and the world's largest power to gas plant, producing emission-free hydrogen from surplus electricity. So again, what I hope to share here is that, you know, we are heavily invested in our energy future and moving down that continuum to provide a, a less of a carbon footprint. And we're quite proud of that at the, at the same time balancing our core day-to-day business. And with that, I think I'd like to, to turn things over to Daryl Arnold, who is Manager of Operations for the region. And he can give you a sense of the number of projects that are underway as well as being planned. So significant dollars, significant economics involved with this. And so with that, Daryl, over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Steve, and good morning, council. And thanks again for the opportunity to present this morning. So as Steve said, we'll go over a number of projects this morning, some that are currently with, you know, in execution and, and some that are in development. So we'll start this morning with some compressor station projects. So the first one here, this project is in, is an execution. It kicked off late last year and it's some meter run replacement work that we, that we're executing at our Corona compressor station. We expect the project to be executed through 2021 and into 2022. The, you know, the Corona compressor station has been as part of our portfolio for quite a long time, in service since 1964. And it's a critical natural gas storage facility that provides energy across the province during peak periods, particularly in the winter operating months. So this project that we're undertaking is a $60 million investment into this facility. And as I said, the main work is to upgrade some meter run piping. We'll be moving some existing above grade piping to, to below grade piping. This project will create, has created and will continue to create many temporary local construction jobs and provides us the opportunity to source local material whenever possible. So this one, again, in flight and we look to wrap up in 2022. The next project here that we're, it's in development, we're calling it the Don Corona Project. So we're in the preliminary stages. This, this, this project is looking how we address some of the assets at the Corona compressor station. So some of the, the compressors at the station are meeting their end of service. And we're reviewing right now what the long-term strategy is to, to address that situation and going through a number of different options that we've developed and assessed. So once that review has been completed, the plan is to circle back with council on what the future plans are for that specific project. So pipeline projects that are going on in Lantern County. So the first one here is a little bit of an update. I believe I had an opportunity in 2019 to address council on this project. So at that time, this project was in development and since then, we have received Ontario Energy Board approval to proceed with this project. So we plan to kick off construction later this year in the May timeframe. Expect construction to continue out throughout the summer with this section of piping being placed in service in November. So as I said, currently in the planning stages, we have some preliminary work taking place in the field right now, such as tree and vegetation clearing. And we'll look to be fully mobilizing later in the spring. What I'd say about this project, you know, the Sarnia pipeline system is very critical operation for Enbridge Gas. It provides, you know, reliable and affordable natural gas to customers in the Sarnia lanterns industrial heartland, which is a critical part of, you know, the local and Canadian economy. And again, this project is a $31 million investment in our assets to this pipeline system. And again, opportunity that will be supporting temporary construction jobs. And again, opportunity to source local material when it's possible. Next project here is the London Lines Replacement Project. So the London Lines Pipelines is a, is a two pipeline parallel system that runs from our Don Storage Facility in Don Euphemia. And it runs to a station just outside of London, a middle six center. So this pipeline directly serves hundreds of customers. Hundreds of customers are directly connected to this pipeline. And then there's also a number of communities that are indirectly serviced by this pipeline, including Rufford, Oakdale, Oil Springs and Shetland. So the London Lines were originally installed in the 1930s and 1950s. And the original intent was to supply service to the city of London. As I just stated, you know, the, the use of the pipeline is a little bit different since it was originally installed. The project's purpose here is to improve the integrity of our pipeline network, increase system flexibility and ensure adequate supply to the area. So the proposed project is to replace the existing two pipelines with a single pipeline that operates at a higher pressure. And this product, so this is a replacement project that's going to span about 82 kilometers. So a very big project for us. I'm happy to announce that just last week, we actually received Ontario Energy Board approval for this project. So we plan to kick off construction later this spring and anticipate to have the new pipeline in service by November. So this is a $164 million investment in this pipeline system. And what I'd say is, you know, the, the running line, we're still finalizing the running line, working with, you know, municipal staff on, on various discussions. But I would say, you know, high level, this pipeline currently runs along Ben Path Line and the sideline within Don Euphemia. And the intent is that this pipeline will have a very similar, if not the same running line. So meaning that any customer that's attached and serviced from the, the pipeline today will continue to get service in, when the new pipeline is installed. And in fact, the, the new running line will actually give us the opportunity to service new customers. You know, right now we anticipate at least five properties in Don Euphemia will have the opportunity to connect to the pipeline that are currently not connected today. So again, a, a large investment to the pipeline system in the area. Many temporary construction jobs will be created by this project and an opportunity to source local material where we can. As I said, we continue to work with staff on this project and we have plans to go to the Don Euphemia Council for an update in early March.
All right, to interrupt Mr. Arnold, we're getting past our 10-minute allotment. So I don't know, I don't want to cut you too short, but we, we are past the 10 minutes.
Sure. Just a couple more slides and, and we'll be tidied up here, I think. So quickly here, again, another project that's in flight. It kicked off in 2020 and we have a little bit of cleanup work here and to complete this year. This project, the storage handsome project is to increase the maximum operation pressures of a few pools of existing natural gas storage pools. This, this project is a $50 million investment in the area and expect to be wrapped up later this year. And then I believe this is the final project here. This one's in development and it's in front of the Ontario Energy Board right now for consideration. This project again is to increase our storage capacity to, to service what we see as growing demand for natural gas. It has two parts or three parts. One is increase of maximum operating pressure of some storage pools. And a, a couple of pipeline modifications. One is installation of a new MPS24 pipeline approximately two kilometers and rerouting of an existing pipeline. So this one, as I said, in front of the Ontario Energy Board, that it's being considered right now as we speak. And it's about a $60 million investment in the local assets. So with that, a quick update on the projects and I'll pass it back to Steve Jellic.
Yes, real quickly and mindful of the time, what we've been looking for, for your consideration is a letter or resolution of support for the 21, 22 storage project that helps demonstrate the support need. And Brian Lenny, who's on the, on the call, can provide sort of a template if, if the county would consider that, Warden.
Okay, um, do we, if we could maybe go away from sharing the screen, I can see all of council that way. There we go. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counsel Weaver to support, seconded by Counsel Broad, all in favor. Let's carry. Thank you. Is there, we don't really have time for questions, but if anybody has a burning one, I'll take one. Counsel Runboats.
All right. Thank you, Warden Weaver. Currently, the federal government is enforcing a carbon tax on natural gas and that tax continues to increase each year. Can you tell me if this carbon tax will be added to CNG created through methane gas supplied by landfills?
It's a good question. And I don't have the specific answer for you, so I don't want to speculate. That's something that we certainly can get an answer for you and get it back to council.
Thank you.
Seeing that, thank you, Mr. Jellic and Mr. Arnold for your presentation. And if you forward that template to, to us, we'll make sure we get that letter of support.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. Good day.
Thank you. Next delegation is Mr. Robert Dickerson, resident of Sarnia, who is presenting his concern, traffic concerns at the intersection of Brock and London.
Mayor Bradley.
Mayor Bradley, sorry.
Yeah, this is a point of order, Mr. Warden. We have a 10-minute rule on delegations. And we've now got half a dozen, you know, behind us. And I don't understand how the 10, that just happened with Enbridge. Appreciate the presentation.
No.
To be clear, that's 10 minutes for all the delegations.
Yeah, they were, they were told ahead of time and I should have come in sooner. But we thought that it's harder to keep control here than it is in open in the council chambers, but we'll stick to that now. Thank you.
Everyone appreciates that.
Yeah. Mr. Dickerson, are you prepared to give your presentation now?
Hello.
A little bit louder, please.
Okay.
There you go.
Mayor and County Council, thank you for letting me present. So I hope technology works. I was told that the staff will play the presentation, let sure they're doing it, but I have it prepared. So I will get it going. Sorry for the delay. It's all technology. Dear County of Lantern, Councillor, my name is Robert Dickerson. I'm a resident of Sarnia and I would like to present to you the issues observed at the London and Brock intersection and some potential solutions. I do own a house at the Brock and London intersection, therefore I'm very familiar with the issues observed there. These are predominantly westbound red light runners on London Road. There's also a school nearby London Public School and therefore a lot of traffic by foot of students going to and from school. In general, this area is unsafe for pedestrian because there's no boulevard and the pedestrian sidewalk is at a minimal width of 1.5 meter. There's also complete lack of safe bicycling infrastructure. Due to the width and straightness of the roads in this area, it encourages motorists to speed and go faster and faster. Another issue that was hopefully fixed now is the dangerous right turns on red Brock onto London Road. This is a Brock and London intersection and this red light just ran a red light. It was solid red. Again, Brock and London intersection, light turns red right now. The traffic on Brock Street will start driving and about six seconds and the red light, oh, we ran a red light. That's me taking out the garbage. Light turned red right now. I look, I see that a vehicle approaching the intersection and hey, it's a red light, my friend. Oh yeah, whatever. Let's carry on. This is the area of concern. You see east to west London Road and some of the side streets coming in, namely Brock Street, Vital Street, Intersina Street and Franzki. The area of concern is in red circle, that is the Brock and London intersection, also known proximity of London Road Public School. Let's have a first eye view of the area. This is Mitten and London. We're flying westbound. On the upper right corner, you see London Road Public School. London Road here is about four lanes wide. We are approaching here College Avenue with the school crossing. Next is Fleming Street. We are approaching now the Brock and London intersection. You see the road is getting wider. It's go from four lanes to five point five lanes, three lanes going westbound, two lanes going eastbound and a half lane in the middle. This width encourages motorists to go faster. Here, we are approaching Vital Street and the next intersection is Christina Street. Please note how much road infrastructure is there. This road infrastructure could be used better and wiser. One of the immediate actions we need is to create a school and community safety zone with a reduced speed limit and increased. The red on the screen represents the approximate area of this school safety.
Should we only be seeing a title screen right now? Because that's all I'm seeing.
No, we we haven't. There is an issue, but we're going to announce after that you have access to this in your agenda if you want to see it. I'm not sure what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay, I can try again. Is it better now? On the upper right corner is London Road Public School. The yellow dotted line is the path of school pupils going to the school and crossing at London Road. This next step would be to implement the transportation master plan that the city of Sarnia to include London Road to ensure continuity, connectivity, usability for all users of road infrastructure. We need to use our existing infrastructure better and smarter. Currently, in the transportation master plan, London Road is excluded. However, London Road is a vital part of bicycle lanes because on Vital Street and Brock Street in the transportation master plan are bicycle lanes, but there's no connection onto London Road. Here on the screen, you see my artist interpretation, how these bicycle lanes could look like in the future. Dear County councillors, due to the time limit for my delegation presentation, this is all what I can show you today. However, please refer to the written letter I give you for further information or please ask me any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Robert Dickerson? If we could just not share a screen. There we go. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you for that presentation and we will give it some consideration. The the third delegation is Jennifer McCann, co-founder of Sarnia's Making Affordable Living in Lampton, Small. You have ten minutes, please, Jennifer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Presentation. Okay, everybody see the presentation? Okay, well, I'm Jennifer McCann and I'm here on behalf of Small. And I'm joined here with David Waters and he's the CEO of Habitat for Humanity. So I'm just on a committee that is called Small and Sarnia's Making Affordable Living in Lampton. And I'm joined on this committee with Lisa Malott and Michelle Parks. Our vision is to bring affordable housing to individuals and family in need through a Tiny Homes Initiative. Housing. It's on the screen. So we'd like to work with the agencies and nonprofit providers and other sectors of government to increase.
Excuse me, Jennifer, we don't see your presentation yet.
Oh, you don't see it? Okay. Do you see it now?
There we go. Yep, thank you.
Got it? Okay, perfect. Something on my screen, but anyways, so I'm Small and that was that screen. So our vision is to bring affordable housing to individuals and families in need through the Tiny Homes Initiative. And in the housing plan, we found key factors that would bring an end to homelessness and there are as follows. Develop community systems that promote an integrated and sector approach to ending homelessness. Support innovative solutions to end homelessness. Increase cooperation, participation and leadership to increase the affordable housing stock and the supportive housing stock. Just down on my screen. Tiny House, we believe that tiny homes will help do all of the following. Support innovative solutions to housing, increase the affordable housing stock, expend options to lower income households, increase community awareness about the range of the issues related to housing and homelessness. And the first step we decided to do was form a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. And the next step was to present to Sarnia City Council for the Tiny Homes Initiative and ask for bylaw exemptions. We received a report and we're going to be present again at City Council in March for further discussion. And we have them reaching out to the community partners to help us in this. And the concept is to work with community partners to get this project off the ground. And the tiny homes are typically five hundred square feet and resemble a cabin or cottage, but include all of the amenities of a larger home. Typical cost is approximately fifty to sixty thousand dollars. And it's a not-for-profit initiative to sustain affordability long term. And the permanent structures with no wheels. And we'd like to build where it is economically feasible and it will complement the neighbourhood. And this is all to improve, give people a hands up in in life. Small is hoping to work with many community partners, which is the city of Sarnia, the County of Lampton, Women's Integral Home, the Indian of the Good Shepherd, Lampton Elderly Outreach Circles, Sarnia Legion and Veteran Affairs and the First Nation Communities. And our main partnership, of course, is with Habitat. So our next step is we're looking for the changes to be added or implemented to the current bylaws, which is a specific tiny homes amendment with exemptions for Habitat for Humanity. No, we do not want to sever the property for multiple houses, which means one service for two to four tiny homes. And of course, we find that feasible, being as the homes are only three to five hundred square feet. Since the beginning, this initiative, we have had support from the local media, which has spurred outreach and meetings with local groups, individuals and government representatives. And today, we have received formal support from Dave Waters, David Waters from Habitat for Humanity, Georgia At Parsons. We have received numerous emails of support from community residents, starting Age Friendly Committee and the Indian of the Good Shepherd. Tiny Homes is a concept that is being used in many provinces in Canada and countries around the world. And this concept is not discriminating against marginalized people in their community. Tiny Homes is a concept that continues to work throughout other communities and is a start is a start to decrease homelessness. It gives marginalized people a hands up when they need it. And tiny homes will not destabilize neighborhoods, but will enhance neighborhoods. And I've just listed a bunch of the provinces and countries that have already started with the tiny homes. And so the supports we need for tiny homes would be the county council, county staff, all the mayors, city council members, city staff and all of the community. Hoping to accomplish is to have have staff look into ways that Lampton County could support tiny homes. And we're hoping to have support from county council and county staff to make amendments that will accommodate tiny homes. We believe that tiny homes will be beneficial to many people in the county. I believe that the responsibilities of the community are as follows. Like any point in our lives, our lives could change. And for some, life hasn't turned out quite like they'd like, but it doesn't mean that they shouldn't be given a hands up. There is a diverse group of people in low income. Single people, single parents, married couples that cannot afford to purchase a home because it's just unattainable with the prices in the in the county. But a community should evaluate, should be evaluated for what they have done for the less fortunate, which is to help out where they can and do what they can for people who are not as privileged as they are. It's our hope that the council pushes for tiny homes. It's our hope that council does not look at tiny homes as having an adverse effect on communities throughout the county. And our mission is to make as many tiny homes as necessary to fill the housing needs of the county. Housing needs are not just for the homeless. Housing is is for a great many people in the community. And if we can make owning a home possible for long-term people or families, then apartments will become available to house some of the homeless. Owning a tiny home will give people a chance to save money, build equity, which likely will turn out to them to buy a larger home in the future. And we're hoping that council looks at the Schitt's property more closely, as I know that it has been under discussion in previous meetings. And they can envision a tiny homes community built there with a garden and community centre, which will house a diverse group of people. And in conclusion, I'd just like to thank the Warden, Deputy Warden and all of council for letting me speak today. And I have Dave Waters on the line if anybody has any questions.
Are there any questions for Mayor, councillor Bradley? No sound there.
This is more directed at staff. The city had sent on the nineteenth of January a letter to the county. And I believe councillor Bird was following up on, about the Schitt's property. And the email I saw yesterday got the impression it had just been, I guess the word was dealt with. And there were two separate letters. There was the initial that's going on about social housing prior to Christmas. This was a separate letter looking for the city and the county to work together on the Schitt's property. Could I ask, I guess the clerk, so all these individuals around the line, where that is at?
Mr. Tiffo.
Yes, thank you. We did receive a letter over the Schitt's property from the city of Sarnia. And that letter will end up in one of our packages for council considerations specifically, so that everybody gets to see it. But as well, I can inform council that back in November, we, well, hold back to two thousand nineteen, we had a discussion with Lampton Kent District School Board over the Schitt's property, which included the school. And if, according back in January of twenty twenty, it was not a viable option for the county for a number of reasons. However, ever since then, then the discussions were mutated into whether or not they'd be interested. We'd be interested in the lands if the lands only were to be severed for potential development of affordable housing stock. And we've communicated that to Lampton Kent District School Board back in November of twenty twenty. Again, in in discussions and in writing that if ever the school board were to sever just the lands, that the county would definitely be interested in 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 having those discussions. And of course, if that were the case, and if the London District School Board were to go down that that road to sever the lands, then the provisions of the Education Act in terms of preference and who they have to offer the lands to would apply. And we would be up there ranked along with the city of Sarnia. So yeah, we've had those discussions. It's confirmed in writing with them.
I think the intent of the letter is being missed. The intent of the letter from city council, and the city councillors can correct me if I'm wrong, was that the city and the county would work together on that property, looking at the the opportunities, including this opportunity or affordable housing or a combination in creating a community hub. It wasn't just to go through that pecking order process, which we're quite familiar with. It was to bring the city and the county together to look at what opportunities might exist there and to see if they were viable, practical and financially feasible. That's my understanding of the letter we sent you on the night, on the nineteenth of January.
Correct. And we did have a discussion even prior to then, because the issue came up back in November from city council when our our Warden and our CAO provided a State of the Union addressed to city council and that interest was expressed. So we did have preliminary discussions back in before Christmas with some of your management team over Schitt's Schitt's property. At this point in time, it's just the Schitt's property, the lands are not currently available, despite the the ask of Lampton and District School Board. But nonetheless, it's definitely something that is on the on the list, is not being adored. It will definitely be something that we will continue to work with with your management team.
Councillor Bird. But you're on mute, councillor. You're still on mute, councillor Bird.
Sorry about that. Further to councillor Bradley's comments and my communications with Mr. Tiffo yesterday. Couple of things. How long, like I was disappointed. I thought because it was for council, county council, it would be on today's package, but how long do we have? Because I still would like to see some combined discussion between city and county on this. Lots of people have contacted me to say, you know, they have different proposals. People have been in a lot of thought about this, especially since we've had consultants in in the city looking at our assets and all different kinds of things. So it's made people think more deeply about this and realize what the future could hold for that building. So I would like, if possible, to get some definitive answer on when we can have that discussion of a combined councils, because I think this is very important right now.
Yes, no, I think a good point. I know that discussions have been ongoing. I'm not necessarily personally involved in in all those discussions, but we can provide council with an update on the discussions that have taken place and discussions that will continue to take place and what the strategy is in that regard and not necessarily exclusive to Lampton Kent District School Board's lands either.
Yeah, and just one further point, please. Do we have a deadline by which we must accomplish this or is it just open right now?
I think it's a it's an ongoing issue, as I understand it, in terms of the the need for affordable housing stock in the city of Sarnia and elsewhere in the county. So I think at this point in time, we could probably bring back a report for for April in terms of let you know exactly the steps that have been taken.
So so will the letter from the city of Sarnia's Clerk's office be put on our next meeting's agenda? Okay, thank you.
Councillor Stark.
Thank you, Warden. A comment and then a question. The comment is, I'm in support of councillor Bird's initiative. As you know, I have proposed a a look at the southern portion of the Schitt's property for affordable housing. And that obviously affects the discussion we're having today. However, I think the bigger question is, what are the possibilities? And the possibilities need to be explored. And the joint, the joint meeting of councils, I think, is a very good idea and one that will bring about some additional ideas that I think need to be looked at. And when you consider in the context of affordable housing and the population of the urban area, you need to realize that the majority of the affordable housing issues, in fact, fall into that area. So I encourage that. My question, and first I'd like to thank Ms. Walker for her presentation. And I know that it is generally focused around equity positions for lower income earners. And that really is different from what we did in terms of affordable housing policy in terms of trying to address the needs of more people through rental units. in terms of trying to address the needs of more people through rental units and getting people into a position of affordable housing. So my question is to Mr. Waters. Given that we, the city of Sarnia, donated land to your organization and a grant in lieu of development fees, my question to you is, is it more cost-effective to look at continuing on the line that the county currently is in terms of developing affordable housing units for rental occupancy, hopefully leading to equity positions later through your organization? Is it more effective use of monies, resources, that way versus looking at utilizing tiny homes as envisioned by Ms. Walker?
Yeah, I think it's a fine line. We're looking at many different options through Habitat these days as sort of a model across our country, starting to change in different areas based on the parameters in their areas. So one of the things that Habitat is looking at these days is rental with equity. So that is becoming sort of part of our portfolio. You know, I think the tiny homes initiative sort of would fit into that, likely that category. When you're, when you're trying to put multiple homes on one lot, you can't divide the lot from a whole ownership perspective, right? So the idea would to make these projects rentals with equity. So it would be sort of a leg up in the future that they could take their equity from their time in the tiny home and go purchase or purchase a home. So again, I think that rental right now in the tiny homes area is more of a bigger play than the ownership piece. I don't know if that helps, Mike, but that's sort of what we're thinking.
It does, in fact, it defines better how the equity portion of the equation is. To me, it is unrealistic to look at a subdivide of, let's say, four units onto a typical building lot and then somehow divide that in from an equity point of view.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I see it as a stepping stone as opposed to anything else.
And that's the way we're looking at it. I think the key, the key point for Habitat, if we get involved in this initiative and we really want to, because we can move the needle and place more people in affordable homes on a larger scale than we're currently doing, is it's all about, really about the bylaw change and the servicing aspect, right? To service, to put four tiny homes on a lot and four services is just really unaffordable for us and for any, probably any builder to build a tiny home. So that's where our obstacle lies, I think.
Counselor Arnold, do you have a question, please?
Yes, thank you, Warden Marriott. Jennifer, thank you so much for your presentation. I really appreciated it because one of the things we talked about during our official plan review was to look at lowering the square footage for a single detached home. And I'm just wondering, Warden, if it would be appropriate or in order at this time to make a motion to have staff come back with a report on how we can change the official plan to make these things worthwhile or available.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Weaver.
I would second that, I have a comment as well.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Weaver.
Yeah, I think that's exactly the point of the delegation was to have us look at our bylaws and our ways that we could support this. And I think that needs to happen at the local level and the lower-tier municipalities as well. So I fully think that, you know, we're kind of a little off track talking about the Schitt's property because this, yes, it may be connected in a way to do tiny homes on it, but I think it's two separate issues that needs to be dealt with. This report's asking for us to look at our official plan, so I happily second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions on the motion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, let's carry. I'd like to thank Jennifer and David for your presentation and we'll move forward from here. Thank you.
Thanks to everyone.
Next delegation is Stephen Thompson, the C E O of SLEP for his annual update and presentation. Go ahead, please, Stephen.
I am going to start, just as a bit of introduction, it's Catherine Walker. I am Chair of the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership, and it is my honor to serve as such. I would like to thank county council for your continued support of economic development across the Sarnia-Lampton area. From my experience as an owner of two small, medium enterprises, I can attest to the importance of a robust economy. This pandemic has highlighted the need for long-range planning with the ability to shift focus when the unimaginable happens. I believe all the work SLEP has completed over the past few years is the type of work that will position us to meet the new demands of the future. And Stephen will highlight those in his presentation, so I will turn it over to Stephen.
Very good, thank you for the, thank you very much for the introduction, Warden, members of council. Pleased to, pleased to be here to provide our annual update. Slides are in the package, I won't cover every bullet. My goal is to respect the 10-minute timeframe. The outline of the presentation is in your package and given the timeline, I'll jump right into, jump right into business attraction. Throughout 2020, metrics around new business attraction continue to remain very strong. Our total active client load actually reached record highs at over 120 clients, investment clients that we were working with, up from 103 in 2019. These clients represent a potential of over $1 billion in potential investment. This includes 73 new investment clients from over the past 12 months. The success that we've had can be attributed to a number of things, including expanded engagement with the Investing Canada Trade Commissioner Service and also leveraging opportunities to deliver webinars and virtual presentations to build awareness of the Sarnia-Lampton area's key value propositions. In 2020, we also had notable announcements, including a transportation equipment manufacturer creating 100 new jobs and an international chemical manufacturer investing and, very importantly, expanding here as well. A number of other clients have conditional offers on sites and are working towards final site selections and announcements. And on this, on this slide that's in your package, we've highlighted some of the details as well as what we're seeing in terms of some of the, some of the key sectors. Given, given the year that we've had and what an unprecedented, unexpected year, the team really pulled out all the stops this year to support employers from across the Sarnia-Lampton area. With all the economic uncertainty caused by COVID-19, never has it been more important to support local businesses. Business retention and expansion consultations were initiated with 287 Sarnia-Lampton area employers to provide suggestions, assistance, and connections, all important in helping these businesses remain successful. These employers represented over 5,000 full-time and 1,000 part-time employees. In addition to COVID-19 circumstances, hiring challenges, accessing financing, and succession planning remained key areas where we provided assistance. Highlights include two manufacturers, each creating over 10 jobs and 100, sorry, over 10 jobs and $1 million. Gosh, I wish it was 100 million. 10 jobs and $1 million in investments as a result of these programs. In addition, we launched new services, including the Digital Mean Street program to help local, small businesses stay safe and generate sales online. Over 100 businesses were assisted just over the past few months. And over the past year, tools and grants were awarded to 79 locally-owned businesses to help them with online promotion and e-commerce sales. At the outset of the pandemic, a business and economic task force was launched, comprised of business-related organizations with a region-wide mandate. The task force came together initially to compile intel on supports for business. Programs were being announced and adjusted on an almost daily basis by upper levels of government. And employers were having great trouble navigating the rapidly changing landscape. We developed common resources and leveraged each organization's expertise to help guide the many businesses that were contacting each of us. Hundreds of businesses and stakeholders signed up to get updates and 71 communications have been sent to all subscribers and continue on an as-needed basis, including recent weeks when, when the intake for the province's Small Business Support Grant opened. Several other initiatives have been launched and are listed in the presentation and online. In 2020, interest in entrepreneurial ventures continued to increase. Our programs saw expanding demand throughout the year. The Starter Company Plus program, designed to support new and existing entrepreneurs, received strong applications from more than triple the program capacity. Nearly the same held true for the Summer Entrepreneur Program for students at nearly three times the program capacity. More broadly, our one-on-one small business consultations pivoted to phone and video calls, which actually increased the demand significantly. The additional needs of entrepreneurs through these virtual consultations are being partially offset through business enterprise center programs from the province. Our workshops and seminars have also moved to live video formats and new partnerships have been formed with other small business enterprise centers across the province to share resources. Pre-pandemic, we partnered with Lampton College on the area's largest-ever job fair to connect students, graduates, and experienced workers with opportunities across the Sarnia-Lampton area. We connected virtually using online booths and presentations at three additional events to reach national and international audiences totaling 1,500 people, all with the goal to promote opportunities across our county. As border restrictions tightened due to COVID-19, we developed additional digital marketing campaigns to target specific demographics entrusted in relocating from larger urban centers. Through these, we reached 660,000 people, generating 710 leads through our website. Supporting area employers has also been key, ensuring Sarnia-Lampton's internationally-owned companies are assisted in navigating the new border restrictions. We have also been supporting employers with their post-pandemic employment planning to encourage them to consider new residents, especially for specialized or hard-to-fill positions. We are collaborating with the Sarnia-Lampton Local Immigration Partnership on the revised strategic plan that was part of the council package the other week with a focus on newcomer employment outcomes. And we partnered with the Workforce Development Board and Lampton College to host a series of online seminars to assist employers with hiring challenges. Statistics from the Real Estate Board show that around 25% of Sarnia-Lampton area house purchasers are from outside the area. Meanwhile, real estate listings have reached record scarcity at under 150 houses on the market across the entire county. In spite of the pandemic, all the initiatives described earlier in this presentation are ongoing and continue to look strong. Economic recovery priorities continue to be developed through the Scenario-Based Recovery Planning Initiative in conjunction with the Workforce Development Board. We are also working on a number of new initiatives. We are putting finishing touches on videos to promote 14 innovation success stories from across the Sarnia-Lampton area, leveraging the community marketing materials we developed in collaboration with each area municipality, and working on several major strategic initiatives, including a strategic sector analysis project, taking another look at where effort should be prioritized from a sector or industry standpoint, based on five- and 10-year outlooks, and also looking at a long-range priority sector. We have also just started working on a strategic sector analysis project, looking at 18 major properties from across the Sarnia-Lampton area, assessing each against established investment readiness factors to ensure we have a strong competitive position relative to other locations in the southwestern Ontario region. As always, this is just a 10-minute snapshot of many, many thousands of hours of work. And we're always here, we're always here for a phone call, a virtual meeting, to drill deeper on any, any specific items.
Counselor Bird, you have a question?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Thank you, Stephen, for your presentation. I would just like, I know you can only cover so many things in this particular presentation, but I would like to know, what have you done specifically at SLEP in conjunction with either the Sarnia-Lampton Workforce Development Board or Lampton College with regard to the trades? Now, I know that, you know, the M P is, the M P of Labor is looking, Ministry of Labor is looking at all this, but what are you doing locally to try and encourage the trades or a better progression planning to have in place for all the industries that are now sadly lacking the trades?
Yes, thank you for the excellent, the excellent question. Warden, through you, there have been a number of discussions and collaborations over the past year. In fact, in fact, just 12 months ago, we hosted the Minister of Labor, Labor and Skills Development, Monty McNaughton, in our, in our boardroom, in our office, to do a consultation with, with industry leaders from the petrochemical sector and other, other major manufacturing sectors. The, the focus is really on collaboration with post-secondary. We are trying to target the discussions to drill deeper because career pathways need to be established even, even earlier on. And we are continuing those discussions, especially in collaboration with the Workforce Development Board that has a mandate in that area and looking for critical partners to get into the, into the secondary school system to both promote entrepreneurship as well as, as specific to your question, the trades.
Counselor Bushi?
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Bird, you have a follow-up?
We'd just like to quickly respond, thank you, Warden. So I understand what you're doing so far. My own personal opinion is that when I heard Monty McNaughton's comments that he was going to hire all these people to go around the schools and try to get people interested in entering the trade, I don't think that's the way to go. Having worked for many, many years in industry and seeing the lack of progression training is never in place, and then they suddenly have this big gap and wonder what they're going to do. You have to plan all the way along, but I think going around schools, kids don't know what they want to do, especially today. They have so many opportunities, so many options. I believe you need to get the schools to partner with the industries and have like Take Your Kids to Work Day, that kind of an idea. Let them watch these trades in progress and, and encourage the industries themselves to have progression training in place, because those two parts are really, really important. But just going down the schools, the kids don't know what all the trades involve. They have no clue unless they have a parent already working in the trade. So just my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Counselor Bushi, you had a question? You're on mute, Counselor Bushi. You're on, you're on mute, Counselor Bushi. There you go.
Just a brief question. First, how many employees do you have in the Economic Partnership? We, at the budget time, Sarnia City Council, at the budget time, hired one person under the Economic Development person. Do you work together? And how do you work together?
Warden, through you, yes, absolutely. The working relationship between, between Sarnia City staff and, and between all municipal staff and SLEP is incredibly strong. Already, specific to your question of the new director of Economic Development at the city of Sarnia, we've already had three Zoom meetings since she started less than, less than, less than 30 days ago. And we've also had, had two phone meetings specifically with the director of Economic Development. And that's in addition to the, the ongoing discussions with other, other team members, including the Economic Development Officer. So I'm very confident that we do have a strong working relationship. And in fact, we, we welcomed both, both Monica and Kelly to our team meeting that was earlier this week, where we were able to, to learn more about each of our focus areas and discuss deeper, deeper collaboration amongst, amongst the team.
How many employees do you have?
The Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership has three Economic Development Officers, and we also have the Business Enterprise Center that focuses on the entrepreneurship supports that were in the, in the middle of the presentation.
Okay, any other questions before we wrap up this delegation? Counselor Stark. Counselor Stark?
Yes, Mr. Thompson, I didn't think, or maybe I missed, did you give an answer to the three county Economic Development employees, three, plus the other office? How many in the other office?
There are three individuals involved in the Business Enterprise Center in partnership with the province that brings the total staff count to ten.
To ten?
Including support staff.
Thank you. Now, over the last couple of months, we have had discussions on the concept of the city of London becoming a hub as to the southwestern Ontario region. Its population is quickly approaching half a million people. In close proximity is the city of St. Thomas and the city of Strathroy. Both are seeing exponential growth, not only in the residential but also in the industrial side. My question is, do you view the opportunities in Lampton County as being subsidiary to or in addition to the opportunities that the city of London present? And could that be considered a hub which we can tie into on the positive side?
Fantastic question. Thank you. Thank you for that, Warden, through you. My personal belief is that there are two very different approaches that can be looked at around that question. The industrial mixes between the two different regions are quite different. The agriculture as well as the heavy industry in Lampton County really does set it apart from some of the other areas that were mentioned. The light manufacturing and other activities that take place across Middlesex and Elgin differentiate in a different way. So I think there's a mutually beneficial relationship that can exist between the regions. There are certain areas where the Sarnia-Lampton area definitely has strengths. There are certain areas where where we can also support areas such as Middlesex, Elgin. So I think there are two different approaches that both need to be fully considered in harmony with one another. What I would highlight is really the last slide, where we are looking at that competitive position. The two projects that have just been launched over the past two months, really taking a deep dive in terms of how we stack up from a sector standpoint and what issues, what gaps, what opportunities there might be as a broader community, broader than any Economic Development Office, to address, whether it's around zoning or whether it's around education or whether it's around trades or whether it's around other things, other building blocks that we need to truly be successful in our priority sectors. Concurrently to that, given the essential aspect to the time circumstance, because we can't wait for these projects, we can't do one after the other. We're also looking at the eighteen major employment sites across the region. We are seeing, yes, we're seeing tremendous success here locally. One of the successes we are seeing is we suddenly got a shortage of available industrial buildings. So that's part of the analysis as well, to look at our readiness to attract new investments to the area, whether it's around land, whether it's around buildings, whether it's around lease opportunities. And that's a critical project to strategically ensure that we have the right position to succeed not just this year, not just next year, but into the future as well.
Okay. If there's no further questions, we'll wrap that up. I apologize to Catherine Walker for not introducing you when I introduced Stephen. So, thank you for that presentation. And just to let counsel know, we'll take a five-minute break after the last presentation, which is coming up next. It's Mr. Mark Perrin, the Executive Director for TSL. Are you ready, Mark?
All right. Good morning, everyone. Hopefully, everyone can see the shared screen. And thank you for having TSL on the agenda this morning. Very pleased to have opportunity to present and provide everyone with an update and overview of tourism Sarnia-Lampton.
You hit mute? I can't hear you, Mark.
Did we lose Mark?
Thanks, Sean.
Is that a bit better?
A little bit, yeah, Mark, please.
Okay, perfect. So just starting off with reviewing our mission and vision statements, as sometimes I find there's confusion as to our mandate. TSL is a destination marketing and development organization whose objective is to serve our Lampton County tourism assets to enhance economic growth and prosperity. Both our mission and vision statements were strongly upheld in 2020 as TSL was widely recognized as an industry leader, not only in Ontario, but also throughout Canada for our contributions within our local tourism industry and our local economy. Oh, good. Everyone can hear still? Yeah, okay. So, with it, we were recognized for our contributions throughout the industry, the local economy. TSL shared its knowledge and experience with the Ministry of Tourism, TIO, SWATC, and other organizations, and our voices and our organization became a trusted resource throughout our industry. Additionally, TSL backed up our credibility by creating one of the most leading-edge marketing and product development programs within the tourism industry this past summer, fall, and winter. So moving forward and understanding tourism a little deeper, tourism is a key economic driver in Ontario, supporting over four hundred thousand jobs in the normal years. And from 2018 to 19, the tourism industry grew by $2 billion in Ontario. Overall, tourism is a $36 billion industry in Ontario, and locally, we continue to see the economic impact of upwards of $200 million. In southwest Ontario, Sarnia-Lampton comes third in tourism economic impact behind only London and Windsor. So why is this important? Because tourism economies create community prosperity and is one of the most important aspects for community development. Overall, if we take a look back at 2020, in January and February, we had events like Silver Stick taking place throughout the county, bringing in four to five million dollars to our local economy. While the event contracts signed with the Sportsnet's Pinties Curling Championship, the Canadian Pickleball Championship, and TSL was in negotiations with half a dozen other events to come to Sarnia-Lampton. We also had Arly Peace just announced a concert in Sarnia-Lampton. We're looking forward to supporting the one-hundredth anniversary of the Lampton Ploughman's Association, candidate celebrations in Sarnia, Petrolia, and Grand Bend, and so many more exceptional tourism events and activities. In March, we attended the SWATC conference, and the following week, the world was shut down due to the spread of COVID-19. I've included a quote from Lisa MacLeod, our Tourism Minister of Heritage Sport, Tourism, and Cultural Industries. I will highlight the most important line, that Ontario's sport, tourism, and cultural industries were among the first and hardest hit. They are expected to take the longest to recover, and they are high-touch sectors that are dependent on gathering of people. I've quoted Minister MacLeod's words many times during the pandemic. From a tourism standpoint, I can firmly say, but I believe that most people only now, because of the pandemic, truly see the significance of our tourism industry, which includes all of our accommodation, restaurant, attraction, sport, event, and activity partners. Tourism is a major economic driver within Sarnia-Lampton, and many of our small and medium-sized businesses depend on tourism, and it is evident the impact tourism creates for the health, well-being, and socialization of our Lampton County residents. So what has TSL done? Well, we went to work adapting, pivoting, and problem-solving. We started by strengthening all of our partnerships, phone calls, Zoom meetings, sitting on boards and panels, collecting information, distributing information, and listening to our industry partner needs while coming up with resources and solutions. TSL was on a ministry panel for sports reopening, taking part in the golf panel. We came up with best practices to allow golf courses to be one of the first activities to reopen. TSL was also on the beach panel, giving advice and guidelines and safety measures to allow beaches in Ontario to open. TSL participated in bi-weekly TIO calls, SWATC meetings, Destination Ontario meetings, and weekly Sarnia-Lampton COVID-19 Business and Economic Task Force meetings as well to continually assist and aid our industry partners with available government programs, guidelines, health and safety measures, and much more. While strengthening industry and local partnerships, we began developing our own programming to support our local industry partners. TSL started with a $50-a-day promotion, supporting different businesses for a hundred days as we marketed and promoting the business, their products, their hours, and share for a chance to win the $50 gift card. TSL would feature a business that week, and they would see a noticeably increase in sales. The campaign was extremely successful with social media posts topping eighty thousand views in a single day and thousands of likes and shares. TSL also developed our first Tourism Sarnia-Lampton Golf Guide. We marketed this as a hyper-local activity that people could take place in safely. TSL promoted this with fast marketing and advertising. It helped to create one of the most successful years on record for our local Sarnia-Lampton golf courses. From this, we developed a support local logo, and we made it a brand to help our restaurants with a restaurant guide for delivery and takeout options. This included the hours and links directly to business partners and webpages on social media and through our websites. This guide continues to be updated and still is one of our most daily-viewed active posts. TSL also worked closely with Lampton Public Health to develop a Restart Sarnia-Lampton Guide, which has had health and safety information for businesses to reopen, and it still is a tool that businesses use on Lampton Public Health website. TSL is currently updating this document again for when this lockdown is lifted. For Canada Day, TSL created another first by partnering with all of our Lampton County municipalities, having a Zoom call with staff from each municipality, and having a collective marketing collaboration on a virtual fireworks experience. Lampton County finished with the third-most views across Canada for the virtual fireworks show. TSL also worked with the Ministry of Tourism to bring Minister MacLeod to Sarnia-Lampton this summer. She did a press conference from Sarnia Bay Marina. We had the opportunity to show Minister MacLeod's Sarnia-Lampton and some of our assets while speaking directly to the ministry about programming, industry support, taking tourism Sarnia-Lampton, or sorry, giving tourism Sarnia-Lampton the opportunity to directly showcase our attractions and seek provincial needs that the ministry can help with. Next, I want to point out that because of the Village of Point Edward being the first municipality in Lampton County to come on board with our TSL pitch for municipalities to implement municipal accommodation tax, TSL was able to receive grant funding from FedDev Ontario through TIO to help develop a $300,000 Discover Sarnia-Lampton program. The program ran from mid-August to December. Every day of the program, TSL promoted and visited an attraction throughout Lampton County and rewarded the first fifty visitors to that attraction with a $10 voucher. Additionally, accommodation partners were rewarded for staying the night at accommodation places with $25 vouchers. Both vouchers were able to be redeemed at local restaurants and retail and attractions throughout Lampton County. We have over three hundred local businesses that are participating in the Discover Sarnia-Lampton program. For the program, TSL has been nominated as a SWATC Tourism Innovator of the Year. We also received regional, provincial, and national recognition. And even though Ottawa tried a similar program rewarding visitors with Visa gift cards, they contacted TSL to get the details of our program, and several ever-tourism DMOs across Canada has reached out to us as well as how to duplicate our success. From our success of the Discover Sarnia-Lampton Rewards Program, we created a gift certificate program, mirroring the original program as gift cards can be redeemed at over three hundred tourism partners across Lampton County. In less than twenty days, TSL sold over $108,000 in gift cards with all that money being spent locally. TSL has also partnered with the World Travel and Tourism Council for the TIO Safe Travel Program. This program is ongoing and will be relaunched when the lockdown is lifted. TSL recently collaborated with SWATC, the London, Windsor, and Middlesex Tourism Offices for the Tourism Adaptation Fund. The fund will provide nearly a quarter of a million dollars directly to our partners in Sarnia-Lampton. I'll wrap things up just by quickly going through a couple of our marketing slides, just showing how we are a leader in marketing for Sarnia-Lampton. We have thirteen thousand six hundred plus followers on Facebook, and we are closely closing in on The Observer as well as other groups like the Supporting Sarnia and Surrounding Business Facebook page. TSL is actually a founding contributor of that page, and we have just about as much clout as they do as far as marketing and promoting our businesses. Additionally, our websites speak for themselves, as we have over a hundred and eleven new users in 2020 visiting our website. We also have over thirty-five thousand new views on the partnership listing page for the Discover Sarnia-Lampton site. Finally, TSL is ready for the future, as I include a quote from our Ministry of Tourism on our Discover Sarnia-Lampton program. Also, the picture is our new travel guide that is ready for distribution when the time is right, along with the note that tourism must be part of the overall COVID-19 recovery plan. And just recapping, Tourism Sarnia-Lampton has been one of the most active, engaging, and direct-supporting organizations to assist our small and medium tourism industry businesses, not only in Sarnia-Lampton, but within the province and the country. What I have listed in the presentation were just some of our highlighted programs in 2020. In total, there is over seven hundred thousand direct dollars spent supporting our local Lampton County tourism industry businesses. The estimated economic impact from our TSL programming in 2020 is $14.7 million, which is a twenty-one hundred percent return on our investment during a pandemic with TSL being a Canadian industry leader in our tourism program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Counselor Bird, you have a question?
Yeah, are we going back to the other screen?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden Marriott. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Perrin, for your presentation. You know, I'm sure you realize, and to most of us, that three words that should come in the same sentence because they're very tightly connected, are tourism, employment, and population. So I do have a question for you on this, but I'd like to just explain. So when people come to Sarnia-Lampton on business or for vacation, usually they've got sort of some time constraints. And if you want someone to come here on vacation and possibly move back here to live and work, you've got to be able to show them what we have and what's here. And because I know this, coming from another country, one of the best things to show anybody what we have here in a real short space of time is the scenic flights from Sarnia Airport, Chris Hadfield, Sarnia's Chris Hadfield Airport. And yet, I have never, in the almost forty-two years I've been here, I've never seen it advertised. In fact, all my visitors that come over, I take them all on this flight, and they all say, why is this not advertised anywhere? Why does the rest of the world know you have? No, you have these beautiful scenic flights. So my question is, why do you never, ever advertise that?
Well, this year, myself, I've worked close with the airport. Tourism Sarnia-Lampton was involved with connecting with all the staff there and also some of their partners, like the Huron Flight Center and others. Something definitely on our radar to focus more on, we've signed up to be a lead on the airport task force. So that's something we can definitely look at. You know, it is part of our travel guide. It's in there as an item and activity to do, but something definitely we can take a look at further.
Well, I thank you, but it's something that we need to-
Kojiko had an ambush somewhere, and it's affecting Kojiko's service all through the area. So just so you know, it's not the county building itself. Do you have a question?
I do. Sorry, more of a comment. So I just wanted to thank Mark for his presentation. I am on the board. I am on the board for the last couple of years on tourism. So I know a lot of what the programs are, but I wanted to formally recognize him in a larger context because I was amazed at some of the programs that were introduced during the pandemic. I mean, that, that industry was devastated by the different closures and there's a lot of innovative programs that came out of it and generated some income for small businesses in this area. So I, you know, there was a lot of creativity and I just wanted to recognize you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Pan. Are there any other questions before we let Mark go? Seeing none, thank you again, Mark, for your presentation again. And I think we've had a request to have a five-minute quick break. I think there's a few bladders out there that need looking after, so we'll give it five minutes.
Thank you, Warden.
I just gotta make sure staff are all back at their spots, which I think they will be by now. So we can carry on. Hopefully no more dropped internet from here to the end of the meeting. We have minutes of council. We'll take under section number eight. So you can do A first. We have a mover and a second, please. Moved by Counselor White, second by Counselor Loosely. All those in favor? Carry. And for B, it's the Lampton County inaugural session minutes of December the 2nd. Moved by Counselor Weaver, second by Counselor Cook. All those in favor? It's carried. And number C, it's a special meeting at Lampton County Council on January 20th, 2021. All those in favor of those, or sorry, moved by Counselor Broad, second by Counselor Stark. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And number nine, we go into our annual general meeting of the County of Lampton Community Development Association Corporation. I'd ask for a motion to make myself chair. Moved by Counselor Arnold, second by Counselor Weaver. All those in favor? It's carried. And an agenda. Introduction of members present.
Will you do?
Yes, please. Mr. Tifol.
Yes, good morning. And I'll just introduce the, the members of the SCLCDC. And of course, we've got Counselor Bradley as Chair of the Board, Allison E. Ward as Vice Chair of that Board, of course, our Warden Kevin Marriott as a Director of the Board, Deputy Warden Pan as a Director of the Board, Ms. Judy Morris as a Director, Ms. Lisa Chikado as a Director, Mr. Tom Strachan as a Director, Ms. Marion Kepes as a Director as well, and Ron Van Horn as a Secretary, and our Larry Clarkew as the Treasurer of the Directors of Officers.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? By Counselor Bean and second by Counselor Miller. All those in favor? It's carried. Are there any declarations of any re-interest at this time? Seeing none, we can move into presentation of the financial statements. And that is going to be Larry. Mr. Clarkew asks you to please present those statements.
On behalf of, thank you, Chair. I had a little problem with my meat button there. Just wanted to thank everyone to, on, on this issue, which we need, Lampton Development Corp. Happy to present the financial statements on behalf of a BDO that basically looked at them. As you can see from the financial statements, BDO has given up, given up their audit opinion. And I want to reassure everyone that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material aspects. Reports on the financial position of the corporation as of April 2020, as well as changes in its net debt and cash flows for the year when it ended. I'm happy to answer any questions pertaining to those statements, but they have been presented fairly well.
Are there any questions for Mr. Clarkew? Seeing none, we need a motion to-
So yeah, to receive.
Motion to receive, moved by Counselor Broad, second by Counselor Bird. All those in favor? Pose, that's carried. So next on the agenda is a present update from the Park Executive Director, Catherine Albian. I'll turn it over to you, please, Catherine.
Good morning, Warden Marriott and Council.
I'm muted.
Is that better now?
That's better.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Good morning, Warden Marriott and Council. I am pleased to share a research park update with you today. This morning, I will provide you with an overview of the research parks' increased utilization and value of our assets, our research and commercialization activities and the research parks' new strategic plan. The Western Research Parks are very successful and internationally recognized based on our support of our research and commercialization tenants, our tenants' economic impact on the region and their success rates following graduation from the park. The year 2020 was a challenging time for all businesses and the park has fared reasonably to date. Throughout the pandemic, the park has provided unwavering support to our commercialization center tenants to assist these growing organizations overcome unprecedented challenges to continue to achieve their technology and business development ambitions. The park's current occupancy rate is 79% with a mix of anchor tenants and startup companies. In 2020, one of our anchor tenants downsized and four leases ended due to the pandemic, which decreased our occupancy to 74%. Over the last six months, our occupancy grew to 79%. The year 2012 is our reference point since we struggled at this time due to the loss of large anchor tenants, which dropped our occupancy below 50%. Although we have commercial office suites available for lease, we remain in a strong financial position. We continue to work toward our objective to attract innovative companies that will help drive economic growth in the region to establish at the research park. Following our financial restructuring, our projections are in a stronger position. Our energy savings programs and our recent refinancing has resulted in annual cost savings of more than $800,000. Our commercialization center is the nucleus of research and development at the park. We've experienced strong growth of our research and commercialization activities in recent years. Since January 2020, we welcomed a number of new tenants to our commercialization center. Many of these companies are startups from outside the Sarnia Lampton region with the goal to expand their operations locally. We have a range of tenants conducting research in our labs, including applied research centers, university spinoffs and startup companies. Our research labs are currently at 95% occupancy with students, researchers, engineers and technologists conducting research projects for local clients, supporting our local industries, as well as advancing our emerging industrial sectors. We're also home to a number of pilot plant tenants at various stages of the commercialization process. We project our pilot plant to approach full occupancy later this year with the establishment of additional new pilot tenants. Our key academic partners continue to be Lampton College and Western University, specifically the engineering faculty. We host the research centers, partner on key events and support the initiatives of both institutions. We look forward to our rescheduled meeting with Western University's new President and Vice Presidents of Research. Western's new leadership team will visit the park to learn more about us and explore new collaborations between our park and the university. The Innovation Bridge Commercialization Alliance uses the strengths of the park and our local partners to support economic growth in the region. Our goal is to train and attract more talent to the region, build globally recognized clusters and provide better support for companies. This heightened support during the commercialization process has contributed to our high graduate success rate from the park. Our new strategic plan enhances the role of the research park in the economic development of Sarnia Lampton and as the world-class technology incubator in the region. Our strategic actions will increase our visibility and we will collaborate with key partners to attract entrepreneurs and new industries to Sarnia Lampton. Prudent investments in our park facilities will attract diverse businesses to the park while securing financial sustainability. Research and commercialization initiatives will continue to strengthen our innovation ecosystem and we will facilitate opportunities that will result in significant technical, economic, social and environmental achievements for Sarnia Lampton. Our strategic plan will support the development of new economic sectors that are a fit with the region's existing sectors, resulting in new technologies and businesses. We see these as key areas for future development and we are growing our commercialization center tenant base in all of these sectors. The pandemic is reshaping the global economy and the park will work with our partners to create a stronger and more resilient Sarnia Lampton. The park and our tenants will be instrumental to develop the features of an intelligent community that will define the success and prosperity of our community into the future. 2020 was a challenging year, however, the research park experienced promising growth. Last year, we welcomed 11 new companies to the park and six of our existing tenants expanded on site. 10 tenant leases were renewed. The park is succeeding to attract new companies in emerging economic sectors and our tenants are creating new jobs and opportunities in Sarnia Lampton. The park and our tenants are also creating local, national and international impacts. Our pilot plant tenants plan to expand to commercial production locally as well as export locally developed technology globally. The park and our partners also established the foundation for enhanced collaboration for the attraction and expansion of new technology-based innovative businesses. Currently, our occupancy rate is growing at 79% with 46 tenants. Currently, our occupancy rate is growing at 79% with 46 tenants. I am pleased to report that we have three new tenants at the park since the beginning of January, and we currently project two new pilot tenants later this year. We have become the preferred location for innovative companies to establish and grow. Many of our recent new tenants are startup companies with very good potential for local expansion. We are fulfilling the park's mission and vision of supporting economic growth and development. Research, commercialization, and entrepreneurship are at the heart of the research parks mandate. We are driving innovation in the region, which is proven by the growing demand for our research and commercialization facilities and resources. Our strong partnerships and initiatives have resulted in new tenants at the park and economic growth for Sarnia Lampton. Thank you.
Thank you for that Catherine. Are there any questions? Counselor Stark?
Yes Catherine, Dr. Albian, I wanted to thank you for your presentation, and I wanted to focus on a couple of your comments. One, that the research park is an economic development driver. Two, that your, the intelligent community is growing, intelligent community commitment is growing. My question is, and this could have been asked for the SLP representatives, but I wanted to hear it from you, because I believe you work in conjunction with one another. In the press of late, as recently as yesterday, the Prime Minister talked about biopharmaceuticals and the growth of development of that sector, particularly in Montreal. My question is, is this, are biopharmaceuticals being investigated by your group or anybody within your research park as an option for economic development? Given the fact that we are a science and technology-based area, does this not represent an opportunity that should be considered rather than simply the government going back to the major centers? It seems to me that we should be marketing ourselves as a science-based community, and in fact, looking at biopharmaceuticals as an option. I'd like your comments, please.
Thank you, Counselor Stark. Yes, we are aware of the bioopportunities in the pharmaceutical sector, and in our new strategic plan, we do have a sector on biotech, which these life sciences, biopharmaceutical development opportunities would fall within. We are aware that Lampton College is doing some work into vaccine development. Western University is doing work in COVID, so we do have relationships with our main academic partners into these areas. The park itself does not have any tenants involved in life sciences, but as part of our strategic plan and the tools we're developing, this is a sector that we will be targeting to bring to the region in the future. And our facilities are not currently set up to manage these life sciences, but we do have room for expansion, so these are opportunities we can look into in the future.
Yeah, it is specific, it is with specific reference to the growth opportunities, and I recognize that you may not have the infrastructure in place now, but if we as a group are prepared to invest in, in moving forward in this area, I think it's an exciting opportunity for your group and for you to lead the way, along with Lampton College. Exciting times. I think there are options, opportunities that come out of COVID-19 that need to be explored in terms of expansion opportunities, so I thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Counselor Stark.
Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you for that presentation Catherine, and at this time, we will ask for a motion to confirm the officers and directors. Moved by Counselor Bradley, second by Counselor Luzy. All in favor? It's carried. And the appointment of the auditors.
BDO.
So at this time, a motion to appoint the auditors, same as last year, BDO, moved by Counselor Bean, second by Counselor Napper. All those in favor? That's carried. Is there any other business? Counselor Bradley.
Yes, just a comment. As chairman of the board for some time, Catherine and Tom Strachler, the former executive director, and I know the people who've served on the board are like Mayor Weaver, know what an excellent job they've done in moving that ship forward. And again, the remarkable thing, we met a couple of weeks ago, despite the times last year, we're attracting new tenants. And that partnership with the college, which I think Counselor Stark referred to, and is, Adlon is very strong, very dynamic. And the best is, in my time in public life, was the county and the city creating that park. So I get to Catherine, a job well done, and the board really respects what you've achieved.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Bradley. Echo that as well. It's, it's, you've done a great job considering the conditions that you went through last year, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take a motion to adjourn out of the CL CTC, please. Moved by Counselor Bean, second by Counselor Luzy. All those in favor? That's carried. Takes us to number 10 correspondence. We can receive, motion to receive and file. Moved by Counselor Bushy, second by Counselor White. All those in favor? It's carried. Counselor Bradley.
Warden Marriott? That went pretty fast. Can I just, I know that the motion was to receive and file. Can I be assured that will be referred to budget deliberations?
Sorry, go ahead.
Through the chair, just to reassure Counselor Luzy that that's exactly what would happen, is that the request would go through 2000, in 2021, then county and council could decide what they would like to do, noting that this is a, this is a 10-year grant request, and we, we work closely together, our county administration and Blue Water Health as well on this, on this submission. But you are correct, it goes to 2021, and then county council could, county council could decide what to do with the request at that time.
Yes, follow-up, Counselor Luzy?
Thank you for that. Again, the concern was receive and file. I just wanted to make sure it would be referred, so thank you.
Counselor Bradley.
Yeah, I had the same question. I also noticed that Ms. Alexander's on the call, and I presume she's here to take questions, if there aren't any.
Okay. Counselor Stark, do you have a question for?
Yes, with respect, and this is for Ms. Alexander, as it relates to the overall request, I presume this is, you are here to deal with those requests. I presume that you will not be presenting at the budget session. That all being considered, my question to you is, is the global request, is there any negotiations within that request? In other words, on the downside, could you live with $5 million as an example? Like where, I presume you're asking for the sky when you delineate your different asks. My question is, what can you live with on the downside?
Good afternoon, everyone. I can say that, well, we definitely recognize the magnitude of this request. I would actually also suggest, though, that we are not asking for the sky. In fact, we actually have in excess of $50 million in capital needs over the next 10 years for Blue Water Health, and echo that we live in a remarkable and generous community where generosity really enables Blue Water Health to be the incredible facility that it is for so many across Lampton County. Recognizing again that it is a substantial request over 10 years, I think that I would be very amendable to some further conversations with, with council members and with Larry, who's been a tremendous colleague to work with on this submission. I think what's important to recognize is that the identified priorities that have been shared with, with county council are areas of significant need and priority for Blue Water Health truly to strengthen and enhance the care that we provide with respect to the petroleum redevelopment, withdrawal management addictions program, cancer care redevelopment. These are all areas where we have seen a demonstrated increased demand on services. And I think a comment I would add to that is, without community support, we wouldn't have the facility that we have. So I think that the quick nutshell answer, Counselor Stark, is we would definitely be open to conversations, but this request was something that was put forward, recognizing the magnitude, but also the tremendous need of these priorities, and that the ask to the county is not to fulfill all of these priorities, but to work in partnership with Blue Water Health and Blue Water Health Foundation and the Charlotte Eleanor Engelhardt Hospital Foundation, and the generous donors in our community to really make these priorities of fruition, come to fruition for Blue Water Health and Lampton County, Lampton County members.
I want, Counselor Stark?
Yes, so would I be correct in assuming then that the, the $10 million is a number that would be the combination of what Lampton County Council offers, if they offer to do anything, plus whatever private fundraising that you have? So would I be correct in assuming that this may end up being a 50-50 split between your private donations or your private fundraising opportunities versus the public contribution through Lampton County Council?
So I would say it would not be a 50-50 split, that the five priorities identified, that there's about close to $30 million in required philanthropic support for those projects. Some of them will come with expectation from the ministry, excuse me, the ministry with respect to capital projects, that there is a requirement that the community share in some of those expenses. The foundations of Blue Water Health, both the Charlotte Eleanor Engelhardt Hospital Foundation and Blue Water Health Foundation have identified board-endorsed priorities to also support these projects through private philanthropy. And as indicated in the slides that were shared last week, I believe, with counselors, it indicates some of the support we have already received privately from, from donors, and also that we are continuing to embark on additional donations that are needed. I think what, like, an example I can share is that the MRI that is identified there is a priority, that's about a $3 million request, and, and that's a piece of equipment that we have, this will be the third MRI for, for Blue Water Health, and in fact, Counselor Bushy was instrumental in bringing the first one to our community many years ago. But that's, that's one that does not require cost sharing with, with the province or an expectation that is a piece of equipment that 100% is solely raised by community support. And we envision this commitment as a partnership between the County of Lampton and Blue Water Health and both foundations that support Blue Water Health, really beyond a 50-50 scope. It's a true investment in healthcare for the residents of Lampton County. So it will, it's definitely, I guess you could liken it to the County of Lampton being recognized as a major donor or a major contributor to the foundation. So they would be a predominant donor contributor and recognized as such, but they would not be the only one. There would be a tremendous need for continued philanthropic support. And I can, can say quite clearly that in addition to these priorities, we have other capital priorities that we're always constantly in need of, and work really hard with our generous community to fundraise for.
Counselor Stark, do you have a follow-up?
I want to emphasize how supportive I am of the request. I'm wrestling with what dollar value that should represent. I do appreciate the fact that you've identified the MRI as a separate item. So if we take that out of the equation and consider that that must be funded wholly by the public, and then think of the other 7 million, that's giving me a sense of understanding of what we need from the, from county. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Just to confirm, that there was a motion on, on the books previous to this, that this was referred to 2021 budget. So just so you didn't think we were glossing over it. Is there any other questions before we wrap this part up? Seeing none. Thank you so much for your presentation, and we'll see you at budget time.
Thank you so much.
That takes us to number 11, Infrastructure and Development Services Division. We have a report there. I think Counselor Bird has some correspondence from last night she'd like to address. You're on mute, Counselor Bird.
Sorry about that. I think that's because the host keeps muting and unmuting us, aside from what we're doing, so it gets confusing. Anyway, thank you, Warden. I have a new motion with regard to this. Due to new information and the provincial policy statement and the quote brought forward for today to this council meeting, I'd like to propose that we only spray the three county-managed areas this spring, and they are Lampton Heritage Forest behind the community building, Lampton Heritage Forest off the Port Franks Road, and Lampton County Heritage Museum, for a price between $82,000 and $92,000, and not to exceed $95,000, including taxes. And this must be communicated and confirmed with Zimmer Air no later than March the 1st, so we need to make that decision today, or we will miss the crucial spraying altogether in 2021. If I can get a second, I'll explain further.
We have a second for the motion, motion, uh, seconded by Counselor Bradley.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Queen of Warden, Warden Marriott, did we not already approve this in committee AM?
No, this is, this is a different, I, Counselor Bird, am proposing a brand-new motion. This is not the same thing.
Yeah, it, it is completely different.
So I will explain, and then if anybody's got any questions. Thank you, Warden. So the background, so at the last AM committee meeting, my motion was passed requesting a quote for gypsy moss spraying for all affected areas in the whole of the county. And I used the staff report given to us at that time to gauge the needed next steps. However, since that report did not contain all the necessary details, I made, I made a motion that I would not necessarily have made otherwise. Firstly, the deadline for confirmation of instructions to Zimmer Air is now March the 1st, so any decisions we're going to make need to be made today, February 3rd. Zimmer Air needs at least two weeks to set up all aspects of the program, and more and more people are asking, so it's going to be a first come, first served. So on January 25th and 26th, I exchanged email communications between staff and myself. I established that there were already egg mass counts and results, results available, although we've not seen them. This information was crucial to any possible motions and or decisions going forward. The three areas surveyed and counted already by St. Clair Conservation Authority in conjunction with the Ministry of Natural Resources and Fisheries, and I would say not the Ministry of Environment, Parks, and Conservation, as was indicated to us in the last AM committee report. So again, I've mentioned the three areas, the Lampton Heritage Forest behind the community building, and the area off the Port Franks Road, and the county museum. All three areas were seen to be severe in this last count. I think it was carried out October or November last year, and they were seen to be severe and also in decline due to the parasitization. I'm told each gypsy moss phase can last three to five years, and once the decline has finished, it can be another 70 years, seven to 10 years before another phase starts. The egg mass counts observed obviously from the air was seen to have approximately 90% coverage by parasites. However, according to my research, if only the first layers are affected, then 70 to 80% of these eggs still have the ability to hatch. And since about 50% of the eggs in an egg mass normally hatch, this means we're looking at possibly another 35, 40% still hatching. So two other important points that came out of all this research since the last meeting that hold strong decision to go ahead and spray the, this season are as follows. So one, the gypsy moss prefers hardwoods, but in the Lampton County Port Franks area, there's a huge amount of carnifers, which do not respond in the same way to the spray. Carnifers are not the gypsy moss's first choice, but when no hardwoods are available, they will move to them. Therefore, spraying with two applications is definitely recommended for this season in the three county-managed areas noted, and this wouldn't cost anywhere near the quote for all of Lampton County. Another really important point, according to the Conservation Authority, is that residents have noticed that logging is occurring in the county forest behind the community center. Residents are most upset with this, as logging is taking down the canopies that were cerulean warbler. that cerulean warbler requires. The cerulean warbler was put on the species at risk list June 8th, 2011. It winters in South America and comes here for the summer. The main threat to this tiny songbird is habitat loss. And the logging appears to be for commercial purposes as healthy trees are being logged. Saving the tree canopy through the spraying would be beneficial to this bird. And I'd like to finish up just by saying that the provincial policy statement does not differentiate between public and private trees, just significant woodlots, and that we have to comply with and conform to the provincial interests to protect the natural environment. And I would like a recorded vote on this, please.
Hey, other, Council Coak?
Thank you, Warden. Before I, I guess, speak to it, I'd just like to ask Mr. Cole if he has the budget for this type of a project to go forward?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Right now, we do have a budget for the original proposal that would be like a good neighbor policy, boundary spray next to other properties that we're spraying. That has been incorporated in what will be the, the proposed 2021 budget. The additional costs, this, this proposal would be in addition to that.
So is it, is it, would that be a no then? You don't have the budget for this at this point in time?
It is not currently incorporated into, into that. We would be looking to finance that from one of the options that would be, you know, normally available to us either through levy or through depletion of reserves or, or some other method like that.
Council Byrd, oh, sorry.
So yeah, so I guess just, just in the area, Port France area, there is a, quite a few community groups that are working together to get their spraying done. And we do know from past history that the, the pine tree will not scrape the forest at all. And our budding lands to that probably won't mitigate any cause that will be coming from the pine tree, which is, you know, like 21,000 acres of land. So it's a huge area that would be a lot bigger than what our, I guess, our, our small amount of spraying would probably not mitigate the overall effect from that. So I guess I would not be supporting this motion going forward.
Council Byrd?
Thank you, Warden. Through the Warden to Mr. Cole, the amount you spoke of that's already in the budget for whatever good neighbor spraying or whatever, what, what is the amount of that, please?
We currently have $10,000 that are, that's assigned under that budget item.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to-
Sorry, that, that includes, that includes the spraying of, of the boundary and the heritage, or and the forest at the Heritage Museum.
Thank you. And I would like to respond to Councilor Cook. These, all this information, in my research, I spoke with Dan Rollinson at the Ministry of Natural Resources and Fisheries and also to Paul Zimmer at Zimmer Air and many of the constituents. So the MNSR and the conservation layer area have really been supportive and these are their recommendations. I, if we go back to the AM committee two weeks ago, my whole point was to not have the private individuals having to pay for it as Sarnia did, the, the city paid for it. So, but we don't want people to have to be responsible for it because we have no consistency, no fluid plan then. These three areas that I've mentioned are the county's managed lands. And that's about, would cost the same price as what we paid for in Sarnia to take care of the same problem. And it's, this is quite a, this is a much cheaper way to do this because they only need a single engine plane. So, you know, this is, if we take care of these three major areas right now, we, we shouldn't have a problem next year at all. So I'm, I'm firmly in, in support of, of doing this this way. So anyway, if there's any more questions or anything, I would be happy to comment.
First, Council Ferguson and then Council Knapper.
Thank you, Warden. Two or three things I'd like to address in there. The, a number of years ago, when Emerald Ashmore went through the Lampton County countryside, there wasn't no programs in place at that time. And we all suffered as landowners quite a substantial financial loss. The second part is a little bit on the gypsy moth. When I look it up, it can kill the trees in over a few years. But most infestations is more aesthetic, where it takes the leaves off and they do regrow. So at what point are we looking after aesthetics and not financial loss? So that, that's a bit of a question. And then with Jason Cole, I would like to see the reports come out of staff because I can go make a different number of reports also at the same time for different topics. So I'd like staff to verify and bring his reports to council. And then on the cerulean warbler, on the logging end of it, every woodlot, trees do reach end of life. They should come out. And if the county can make a few dollars to help our budget, so be it. In my picture behind me, I'm showing myself there taking out a tree. I took it out yesterday. That tree was taken out by a windstorm. That's my own logging operation on my farm I'm showing in the background. All trees do reach end of life. A well managed, healthy forest will encourage all wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Knapper.
Yeah, well, didn't the original motion, uh, letter come from, from property owners out there? And they'd done a significant amount of work on it and gave us a report. And we had basically made our decision on the Good Neighbors Act, which I think was the right thing to do. And I thought it was all resolved. I thought they were happy with that and that we were doing our due diligence as good neighbors.
Thank you for that, Council Knapper, Council Byrd?
Thank you, Warden. Back to Council Ferguson. Yeah, I, I'm, it's a very huge area to look at. I'm not talking about the measurement of the area, but there are so many things to consider. I mean, the Conservation Authority are always really on top of anything that reduces the habitat for any species that's at, at risk. And these, you know, these are, this information is from them. Also, MNSR field expert told me that with the trees, I mean, you're right, trees do have a life expectancy. But where they are damaged through infestations like this, for them to regrow again, you have to leave what's called, what they've explained to me as the cell memory in the bottom of the tree. And I'm sure you know about that. And if the infestation goes below that level at the bottom, I'm not sure what the measurement is from the ground up. But if, if the infestation kills it further than that, you kill the tree altogether. And I, I guess the additional problem, because nothing's happened with the Good Neighbor Program, they're still all waiting. And the thing is with the booking Zimmer Air, no matter which program you go with, we have to make a decision today because the deadline is March the 1st. That's not my saying, that's Zimmer Air. They cannot get more of the live protein or the bacterial material, the BTK, because that has to be ordered in December because it is grown. So Paul Zimmer has to guesstimate how much he thinks he's going to need for the coming year. So once he's used that, there's no more available till December. So if we don't make a decision and actually do something right, you know, today, we have to make a decision either way. I'm not saying what it has to be, but I would encourage that we definitely have to make a decision. So we have to consider all of those factors.
Okay, so in the essence of time, we have two more councillors that want to speak, Council Stark and Council Broad, and then we'll better call the vote.
Yes, through you, Warden, to Councilor Byrd. In a recorded vote with Sarnia City Council, six to three, did you support at city council the spraying for gypsy moths in the spring of last year?
Okay, Council Broad?
I'd, I'd like an answer, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
That was a question through you to Councilor Byrd.
Yes, we did, Council Stark.
You supported?
I didn't support it at the time, no. And I, I mentioned that at the AM committee and I believe, now Bradley had something to say too. I didn't, I didn't support it initially because I didn't know a lot about it. And I thought it was a lot of money for such a small area to be paying out and we needed more, more research. But of course, as always, it's the timing that comes into play. So I've done lots and lots of research since then. I've spoken to many, many residents since then. And I explained this at the last meeting that I now have a completely different opinion of this because after speaking to all the government agencies as well, it's filled in a lot of gaps on the information, so.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that you found religion on this topic. Thank you.
Council Broad?
Thanks, Warden Marriott. Do we not have a report from January 20th from Jason Cole that has some recommendations in there? And at that meeting, the AM committee meeting, they asked for a report on how much it was going to cost to do the entire cap, or county. We have that information now. Should we not be dealing with the recommendations in Jason's report now? Instead of overnight, we got this notice, not even notice a motion, we got this motion put forward towards us. Because I definitely will not support a motion to spray the entire plant. I do not have a problem supporting Jason's recommendations that he made there in that January 20th, 21 report. So I just wondered where we're at here, why this motion's coming forward. We haven't even dealt with the two reports, the one that give the entire county cost and the recommendations that Jason made. Thank you.
So you're correct, Council Broad, that we are going to deal with, with that report once. Because Council Byrd brought this motion up, which she has the ability to bring up any time. We will deal with the report after this, this motion. This is a whole new, separate type of approach, so that's why. So Council Byrd, I'll give you the last word.
Thank you, Warden. Through the Warden to Council Broad, you're right. We did have a staff report coming forward for the meeting in January. And I did make a motion based on that, asking for the report that we have today. That is correct. However, what I've just explained at the beginning of my presentation is that had we seen all available information that I believe staff had in that first report, I would have put a different motion forward at the AM committee meeting. And that information has only just come to me in, in its entirety. And I've been working with everybody to find out. So this is why I've now brought this other motion forward. Because if I knew then what I knew now, I would have put a different motion forward. And this is because staff didn't give us all available information. So that's why I'm doing this and I apologize for the late delivery last night. But I, it's taken a long time to get all the facts together.
Okay, one more, Council Cook, that's it.
Just a point of order. I agree with Council Broad. The report should have been dealt with first. The motion that Council Byrd's bringing forward is superseding or overriding the, the motion that should have been dealt with council first. That possibly in a new business or whatever. But right now, the motion should have come forward from the report, from Mr. Cole first, that we should have got with that. I think going about kind of in a backwards fashion because if we turn down one, then we've got to go back and re, bring back another report that we're overriding, basically.
Okay, Mr. Tipo is going to answer that.
Yes, good afternoon. In terms of the, the, the point of order, ultimately, the report that you have from Mr. Cole's department on this very issue, i.e. the cost of spraying for gypsy moths throughout Lampton County, projects a cost of, if I recall correctly, three to $5 million. But it's just an information report at this point in time. The question now associated with that in terms of the emotion that's currently on the table, that is for spraying for those three distinct areas owned, in, in terms of woodlots that are owned and operated by the county of Lampton at a cost of not to exceed $95,000 including taxes, is related to the subject matter of Mr. Cole's report? And for that reason, I, it, it's appropriate, it's, it's, it is what it is to have a, a motion that's related to the subject matter of that broader report on the table. So it's, it's proper. Now, county, county council can deal with it as it wishes, like every other motion ultimately. But it is because of the nature of the report that Mr. Cole presented, the subject matter, the broad subject matter, and then now the, the, the motion, Council Bird, is a narrower one within the bigger context of that report. So it is properly on the floor.
Thank you for that. That's wrapped it up, is from what I understood. Council Bradley? You're on mute.
I second this motion as a courtesy to the councillor. And I did not support the spraying in Sarnia. And I want that clear. What I was going to suggest to deal with the two, I think, genuine, real points of order there is that we table this motion till after we've debated and dealt with Mr. Cole's report. And just table it to the end of the meeting and then see where we want to go with this. That to me is a simpler solution.
Do we have a second for tabling? That's by Brian White, or Council White, sorry. So no debate on that. We go back to the, the report. So-
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, yeah, sorry. All in favor of tabling?
Till the end of the meeting?
Opposed? Yeah, till the end of the meeting, correct. So that's carried. And now we can go back to the report, Mr. Cole's report. Do we have a motion to move by Council Broad, seconded by Council Cook? All those in favor? Opposed, that's passed. So, excuse me, the, um, at the request of Council Bradley, that goes to the end of the meeting. So we move on to number 12. Items not requiring a motion, we can combine A and B together. We have a motion to receive and file by Council Rumpout, seconded by Council White. All those in favor? Let's carry. Moving to 13. Reports requiring a motion under Finance Facilities and Court Services Division. Do we have a motion for the recommendation? Moved by Council Arnold, seconded by Council Cook. Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's carry. Thank you. That takes us to number 14, the committee minutes. One motion to approve. So I, I'd look at a, a motion to, to approve A, B, and C as a group. Moved by Council Arnold, seconded by Council Dean. All those in favor? Let's carry. And moving into number D, I would ask AM committee, Council Rumpouts to-
Yes, thank you, Warden Weaver. I present the committee AM minutes for January 20, 2021, for council's consideration.
Okay, so number one, I'm just going to name these by number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. That's it, right? So motion to receive the-
10, 11, 12.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed 10, 11, and 12. And 13. 14 is the last one?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. Council Moosley? Moves? Seconded by-
I have a comment when we're done, if I can.
Seconded by, sorry, Council Stark. Go ahead, Council Moosley.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. And it's just in regards to, regarding the other business and a meeting with the Conservation Authority. I wonder if I could get a report from staff and where we're at with that.
Yes, that's, there was, in the last few days, Brian McDougall asked that, that we wait a little bit longer because he still would like more information from the province before he gives his report. We agreed to give it till April. We know that's, that's a long time, but after discussions with staff, we decided that that was okay, that it's too late. So we're hoping that you can see that. Go ahead, Council Moosley?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Thank you, Warden Marriott. And I can certainly live with that, but I think sometime has got to come to an end. So even if we just get an update would be nice. And I I'm just concerned that this is, I mean, we approved a motion back in 2019. And it, I mean, it's a Zoom meeting and just an update, I think, would be nice. But I can live with April, but I think that should be it. Let's get a report. Thank you.
We did decide that even if the province hasn't come with all the information by April, we will still have him give something.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think I, sorry, Counselor Arnold.
Thanks, Warden Marriott. I think 15 and 16 should be included in this as well. I think we stopped at 14 was what I heard, so I may have missed it.
Yeah, thank you for that. I my attachment is playing tricks on me here. And I should have given Counselor Rumpouts the ability to move that. Sorry. Did you have your hand up? So we have a motion. All in favor of that? It's passed. Thank you. So moving into committee PM minutes. Add us. Counselor White, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I present the committee PM minutes from January 20th, 2021 for council's consideration.
Thank you. So we have one. Two. Three.
Warden Marriott?
Yes, go ahead.
If I could speak in regards to number three, did you want me to deal with that now?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I just, I think, I know there's a recommendation on there, but I think I'd like to bring up probably at budget time. I think we should reconsider the chart as far as starting in 2021 to not start then, but to start in 2022 regarding that reserve account contribution. So I'm just giving you a heads up at budget time. I'm going to ask the council here to consider not doing it this year, but start next year. Thank you.
Okay. Number four. Five. Six. Seven. That's it. Okay, that that is all of the the minutes. Counselor White.
You, Warden Marriott, I move that the committee PM minutes from January 20th, 2021 be received and filed by county council.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Bushy. All those in favor? Let's carry. Takes us to 15 items tabled from previous meetings. Yeah, how would you like to address address this? Receive and file. Okay, moved by Counselor Bushy to receive and file to have a seconder. Counselor Rumpouts, sorry. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Bradley.
Yeah, I just want to understand, we're tabling the reports that said we would continue to meet this way for a period of time? It's it's quite confusing.
Yeah, so we could also consider tabling to April the 7th.
Well, I was going to suggest we table it till June, being realistic.
Okay, and that's seconded by.
That's okay.
Okay, so that's okay with the mover?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Did we call a question? All in favor of that? Let's carry. Thank you. It takes us to 16. Yeah, so this would be an appropriate time to deal with the motion earlier from Counselor Byrd. And she has requested a recorded vote. Counselor Arnold.
I'll make a motion to lift it from the table, Mr. Warden.
Thank you for that. Seconded by Counselor Musley. All in favor? Let's carry. Do we have a question from Counselor Bean?
Yes, could we hear the motion one more time, please?
You're talking about my motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Warden. So just this. Due to new information, or I should say additional information, and together with the provincial policy statement and the quote brought forward to this meeting today, I would like to propose that we only spray the three county managed areas this spring. Lantton Heritage Forest behind the community building, Lantton Heritage Forest off the Port Franks Road, and Lantton County Heritage Museum for a price between 82,000 and 92,000, not to exceed 95,000, including taxes. And this must be communicated and confirmed with Zimmer Air no later than March 1st, or we will miss the crucial spraying altogether in 2021. In other words, we do have to make a decision today either way. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Counselor White?
Yeah, thank you. Just a point of clarification. Was this emailed out to council? As luck would have it, my city email is down and has been since last night. So this was sent yesterday. I didn't receive it.
Okay, so yes, it was sent yesterday. Counselor Byrd?
Sorry, it was, thank you, Warden. It was sent to the county addresses, though, Counselor White. It wasn't sent to the city ones.
Right, but mine filters through the city email.
Mine was okay. I did check that first of all. So sorry if you didn't get that, but it did go out to everybody else at the county address.
Okay, call the clerk to call the vote. Oh, sorry, Deputy Warden Hand, you have a question? You're on mute.
So I just have a question or concern. I'm uncomfortable because there's a lot of technical information in there and pricing that's come up. But I don't know if that's been reviewed by the department, like by Mr. Cole. So I appreciate the work that Counselor Byrd has done, but I I don't know anything about the technical merits of it and the cost estimate. Has it been reviewed by staff?
Could I could I just respond to that first, please, Warden? The the cost estimate that I quoted was actually given to the St. Clair Conservation Authority. It was an actual quote given before, like last fall. And that price should hopefully still hold good. And that's why I added on, but not to exceed 95,000. So it actually is about 82,000, but I just built that into it in case. I don't know. I don't think they changed their prices within two months. Mr. Cole would know better on that.
Would you like to comment on that, Mr. Cole?
Yeah, so I know I'm not entirely clear on on where that cost estimate came from. We've been we've been given a quote of just over $100 per acre. The whole of the Lantton County Heritage Forest is a little under 600 acres. So I'm not sure what, how that added up to the to the 90, the 95 or the or the little bit less that Counselor Byrd was just looking at. I don't see, if we were to spray all of Lantton County Heritage Forest, I don't see a problem with that fitting within that price envelope, though.
Counselor Byrd?
Thank you. Through the Warden to Mr. Cole. Yes, accurate, the figures that I was given in talking to all these bodies, Zimmer Air and MNSR and everybody else. It's $118 per acre. They have 616 acres in total, which comes to 82,137,44. And that includes the 13% taxes as well. So I just purely put that range because I didn't know. I added that on. I didn't have to ever change their price for the two months later or three months later that it now is. But they, that's an actual quote and they're the actual figures, so.
Mr. Cole?
So so maybe that's the concern is the 1,600 acres is is I don't know what that's encompassing because we don't own that much land. We have 1,500 acres of total owned land, managed lands in the county. That's that's significantly more than what the county owns in the Port Franks area.
Well, these are the figures that I've been given by with all the agents and some bodies that I've been talking to. So maybe the 616 acres is the three areas we spoke to plus Port Franks, maybe and up to Grand Ben. You might have that within the Good Neighbor policy that was first put together. I'm not sure about that side of it, but these are the figures I was given, so.
Okay. Counselor Stark?
Given the ambiguity of what I'm hearing in this discussion, maybe this, maybe that, I am a strong proponent of spraying for gypsy moss, but I am not supporting this motion because there are too many ambiguities in terms of making an informed vote. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we'd better call the question, please.
Right, with respect to the motion that's currently on the table, it was a recorded vote required or requested by Counselor Byrd. So I will start in alphabetical order with Counselor Arnold. I have a no. Counselor Arnold, I have a no. Counselor Byrd?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Bushy?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Bradley?
Answer's no.
I have a no. Counselor Broad?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Cook?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Ferguson?
No.
I have a no. Counselor, Deputy Warden Hand?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Musley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Miller?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Napper?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Rumpouts?
No.
I have a no. I have a no. Counselor Stark?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Bean?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Weaver's not here. Counselor White?
No.
I have a no. Of course, Warden Marriott?
Yes.
That's a yes. The motion fails. It does not carry.
Okay, is there any other notice of motion? Seeing none? Any other business? Counselor Bradley?
Yes, I did email yourself and staff yesterday on this. It's the province brought down the ability to create another separate levy tax area for small business to help during the pandemic. However, they failed to implement those regulations. And all I'm asking the finance department, which I believe they're in agreement with, if they do implement that we could create a small business sector in the tax levies, would you include that in your report that comes to us in April or May, so we can make a decision if we're interested or not, because it does mean shifting taxes around? And I could just put that to the treasurer. Is that possible for that report?
Through the chair and to Counselor Bradley, definitely, we will be developing a report in April, May during 2021 tax policy options. We're monitoring the small business property class. And you are correct, we're waiting for the regulations. So as soon as we get that and we consult with MTAG or Municipal Tax Advisory Group Advisors, we'll be advising councils to the potential options on how you spread the tax burden for 2021.
Thank you.
Counselor Byrd?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I would just like to say this, like, not only for the gypsy moss topic, but any topic at all. When staff prepare reports for council to look at, this is what, this is all we have. I don't want to be making an educated guess. I want to be making a proper decision. So I would just kindly request that any staff reports are not selective in what they present to us. I would like them to give us every detail they have in their hands at that time on that topic, so that we can make the best decisions possible. Thank you.
Any other, any other business? Counselor White and then Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. In regards to Mr. Dickiefin's presentation this morning in regards to London Road, I'm just wondering if it's possible to get an update on the plans for London Road in regards to any future redesign work or any infrastructure work that is expected in coordination with the city of Sarnia. Should I bring a motion forward, or would that be something that could be just provided to the committee?
I'll ask Mr. Cole if he has any comments first.
Through you, Mr. Warden. At this time, like, we don't have any current plans for for updates or reconstruction of of London Road in that area. So any any proposals that would be brought forward that would consider significant modifications would either have to be done on an individual basis or or through, you know, there were a number of aspects that were that were proposed, many of which have already been implemented. So those are smaller, I would say, small D design aspects. Any large D design aspects, there's no other other work that's planned in that area at this time.
Does that help you, Counselor White? If you want to bring it forward, any motion, feel free to to do that when you want.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Marriott, members of county council. I spoke with our MPP the other day. And he mentioned that in regards to a new small business grant for small businesses that employ less than 100 people, that Lantton County is very underrepresented at this time. And he asked that we make sure that we get that message out to any of the business owners. And it's for up to $20,000. And he also said that there was a federal one as well. These are totally just grants, non repayable. So we wanted to make sure that we got that information out to our small business community and ensure that they, as many as possible, apply to that.
Thank you for that, Counselor Arnold. That's good information. Counselor Musley?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I just want to echo that for Counselor Arnold. I was informed of that. There's actually four different grants. As of the, I think, yesterday I had, all of our businesses were notified to utilize it, but the money's there and we are not, they are not utilizing it, and they should. So I just want to, again, we've sent it out to all our business people. We should all be doing that because the money's there for them. We're not using it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Warden Hand, please. You're on mute.
I was wondering if Mayor Musley could share that email, because I'm not aware of all the board. Would that be appropriate if you could just send a copy of what you sent to the businesses?
Counselor Musley?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Marriott. Yes, what I could do, Counselor Hand, is I can send out the information that we sent out
That's what I mean.
as well as the links. But there's an actual link you can send to the business people. Thank you.
I appreciate that. If you send it to CIO Burns, thank you.
Counselor Napper?
Yes, I just want to, on behalf of my municipality and all of Lantton County, is to recognize the loss of Mary Pat Gleason, past counselor of Petroleum and a very good advocate for rural health in Ontario. She was for years fought for the hospital over there. And she was chairman of the family health team, just done a lot of good things. A woman with a big heart. Couldn't miss her.
Thank you for that, Counselor Napper. Counselor Musley?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Marriott and Counselor Napper. Thank you for that. Yes, it is a great loss for the town of Petroleum, and she was a great advocate for the hospital and the medical center. We did have the flags at half mast, and there will be a two-minute silence at our council meeting on February the 8th. Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Seeing none, I'll ask Mr. Teefo to notice the bylaws.
Thank you. It's moved by Counselor Bean, seconded by Counselor Ferguson, the bylaws one and two of 2021. That's circulated. It'll be taken as read at first and second time.
All in favor? Let's carry.
The government has moved by Counselor Ferguson and seconded by Counselor Bean, the bylaws one and two of 2021. That's circulated. It'll be taken as read at third and final time.
All in favor of that? Let's carry. That moves us to 21 adjournment. Claire, this moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor Napper. All those in favor?
None due soon.
Let's carry. Sorry, Counselor Napper?
I said, none due soon.
That was a long one.
That did not.